Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, June 4th, 2024 Tom Water City Council. We will now go to roll call.
Councilmember Leeta Dahlhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy. Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
Present. All right, we will now do the flag salute, join me in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take your motion now. Need to make my motion.
Yeah.
May I like to move to amend the June 4th, 2024 agenda to add, under council considerations, a discussion of the three example proposals I sent via email on Sunday.
I'll second.
All right, and which meeting was that today, June 20?
June 4th.
June, okay.
It's June 4th today, right? It's June 4th.
All right, so that will be put under council considerations, the last item under council considerations. All right, next we'll be moving to special items. Oh, you need to vote, sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, the motion carries. All right, now we will be going to special items. The first item is Officer of the Year, and we have a presentation. Thank you.
Councilmembers, it is both my honor and privilege to be before you tonight to announce our 2023 Officer of the Year. He's hiding already, Officer Kelly Clark. The selection notes. The selection notes I'm about to read to you really summarize everything about what Kelly has done with the department and accomplished in his 25 years with Tom Water Police Department, why he's deserving of this award, which was voted on by his peers. So I'm going to read what his peers said about it. On every team for at least the past year, there is a sigh of relief in the patrol room every time 4 Metro 22 pops onto the screen. That in and of itself should explain how highly valued Officer Clark is to his patrol partners. Officer Clark is often unaffected by the day-to-day changes and drama of the job as he projects a singular focus. Do the work, do it right, do it together. Routinely Officer Clark goes out of his way to assist his fellow officers, offering his experience and expertise in any way that it may help, particularly for younger officers. Officer Clark is a role model of steady professionalism and reliable partnership. This past year, no other officer has worked a more unstable schedule as he has covered various holes in the patrol schedule. He has done so while maintaining his responsibilities as the only officer currently serving the metro program. It would be understandable for an officer of his tenure to be slowing down or looking towards retirement. Instead, Officer Clark is likely the first on scene. Yes, he is. He is quite a leader in the center of patrol and has become such a consistent presence at TPD that it could almost be taken for granted. Kelly has represented team before self at a high level in 2023 and should be recognized for his effort. With that, I'm going to present Officer Clark, and this is from the Tom Water Police Officers Guild. It's a plaque and it says, 2023 Officer of the Year, Officer Kelly Clark, in recognition of your dedication and service to the citizens of Tom Water. We also have. We also have another gift to give Kelly, something to commemorate what we feel about this award, and that's the American flag. This flag is purchased and then flown over both the nation's capital and or state capital, which is certified in both of these certificates, and this by Commander Mason is holding it right now. Like is yours.
They were giving me a hard time about a speech, and I only actually came up with three things. When I found out about the nomination, I was actually really surprised and very honored and humbled to be working with a great crew of people that we have here working for the police department. As I was getting ready for this evening, I was thinking about, yeah, I'm on the downhill slope of my career and I'm going to miss working with all these fine officers that we have here at Tom Water. Third, I just want to introduce my wife and my stepson. My wife, this is my wife Patty, my stepson Ethan. I honestly believe if it wasn't for Patty keeping me grounded, I am truly blessed for that as well. I just want to say thank you and I'm very honored.
All right, next item is a proclamation for LGBTQIA2S, and I will go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas the city of Tom Water recognizes that one of the greatest strengths is the diversity of people and has longstanding tradition of upholding dignity of the individual, supporting legal equity and fair treatment for all people and ensuring that acts of discrimination and hatred will not be tolerated. Whereas in 1993, the city of Tom Water passed the first ordinance to protect people from discrimination by adding sexual orientation to the unfair housing practice law. And whereas in 1997, Tom Water became the smallest city in the United States to grant domestic partnership benefits to its employees and has since enacted several policies to ensure equity for all Tom Water residents, such as the Equal Benefits Ordinance. And whereas the city of Tom Water is a national leader in affirming the civil rights and innate dignity for all people and encourage the free expression for all culture traditions and personal talents for the social enrichment and betterment of the community. And whereas Tom Water's diversity policy statement affirms its belief that diversity strengthens workforce competency and performance, celebrates and values individual differences, serving increasing diversity, diverse society, ensuring a resilience of the city's mission, program, and services, and critical to the city's ability to serve every resident. And whereas in recognition of the Stonewall uprising, considered to be the tipping point for the gay rights movement in the United States, each June, Americans come together to celebrate LGBTQIA2S plus Community Pride Month and honor our contributions to society. Now therefore, I Debbie Sullivan, the mayor of the city of Tom Water, does proclaim June 2024 as LGBTQIA2S plus Community Pride Month, and will call upon the people of the city of Tom Water to join in celebration, celebrating diversity, promoting inclusion and equal protection under the law, and I further encourage people to join me in eliminating discriminatory policies and practices towards any culture, race, or group. Thank you. With that, we will now go to Open Public Meetings Act, the OPMA, training by Morgan Demaro with the Attorney General's Office, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm really excited tonight to have Morgan Demaro from the Attorney General's Office with us this evening to present an Open Public Meetings Act training. This arose out of your January retreat, at which we had a very brief conversation about open public meetings, and there were many questions. So we're lucky tonight to have our Attorney General's Office so locally located and have agreed to present this training, so you get to hear from the expert. And this is a great opportunity for you to ask all of your questions. So please don't be shy and take it away, Morgan.
Good to go. Great. So thank you very much for inviting me to spend part of your evening talking about the Open Public Meetings Act. This is something that for the last six years, six years working for the AG's office, I have been doing a lot of work with local governments all over the state on our two states, two transparency laws, obviously the Public Records Act and the Open Public Meetings Act. I think there's a huge value in both of these in terms of, you know, the community getting to see the process, being able to see how it is that government gets from an idea to a conclusion. And obviously, what we're going to be talking about tonight is the open public meetings, this forum where people get to see what's going on. Where we're going to go this evening is I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about the significance of open government, a little bit of kind of foundation principle kind of ideas, but really spend the rest of the time this evening going through what's expected for the OPMA to stay compliant, to be able to say, yes, we are meeting our obligations. Something to keep in mind is that the OPMA is like any other law in the state of Washington. It does change over time. We get decisions from the courts, from the Court of Appeals, from the Supreme Court, that shares information that we may not have been aware of in terms of the expectations or how we're supposed to implement these laws. And then the legislature from time to time changes a lot as well. And so I really appreciate being invited to have this conversation tonight because if you, you're required to get this training within 90 days of taking office and every four years thereafter. Really encourage folks to do it more often, that it helps maintain its freshness in complying with law. And if there's any changes, because we're going to talk about a few of those this evening. So with that, let's jump into kind of the starting point for this. And this is some bedrock principles that are in both of our transparency laws. This is where the legislature didn't decide to go out and write things differently. You see this exact same language in both of our laws, talking about, you know, in doing what we do, serving as counsel, me working as an Assistant Attorney General, it's not that we are given unfettered power. It's we have, obviously, you're given power to do things, but there's an accountability that comes with that. And delegating that authority, the OPMA is a key tool for the public to be able to see from a council point of view, how it is that decisions are made, and that's really the expectation for it. Reasons you should care about it, aside from the fact, you know, it's the law, and it's always a good idea to follow the law. I'm going to start with this idea in the left-hand corner this evening. So this is a picture of Justice Brandis. Justice Brandis was sitting on the Supreme Court, US Supreme Court, back in the late 1800s, early 1900s. And if you read a lot of his, a lot of his papers and a lot of his letters that he was writing at the time, he works in this quote repeatedly, talking about sunlight being the best disinfectant. And he was really focused on how do we foster good decision-making in a public arena? And how do we get people to look a broader perspective? And so he was really talking about this idea that, you know, what happens in the light of day, that really causes people to take that bigger perspective look instead of maybe looking, maybe not quite so personally, and say, okay, what's really the best thing for the community, for the group we're working with? Continuing around on the right-hand side there, these are just three headlines that I pulled from newspapers across the state talking about times when agencies have, in these circumstances, been found to have violated the OPMA. And I don't really want to get into the facts of the case, but I really want to talk about the headlines and the impact that headlines have on the community. And when people start seeing headlines like this, it really starts tainting the work that's being done. And people start going, oh, what else are they doing wrong? Oh, we can't trust them. You see this kind of parade of horribles kind of come up in their minds about, you know, what it is that government's doing. And, you know, while you can't stop lawsuits, I mean, but you can insulate yourself as best you can, do things like this evening by, you know, engaging in training, being active and trying to, you know, comply with the requirements. And, you know, hopefully at the end of this, you'll have, you know, one more shield to be able to say, okay, we're doing this right. We don't, you know, we know how to, we have to get through this process. And then the other piece of this is the OPMA, the lower right-hand corner. The OPMA has a kind of enforcement, two kind of enforcement arms to it. One is personal liability for you all as council members. The individual council members are for knowing violations individually responsible for the first knowing violation, $500, if a court should award that, or each subsequent knowing violation, $1,000 personal penalties. Obviously, that's not something that I want to see anybody get, and it's part of the reason I do what I do, because nobody wants to be in that situation. Actually, the thing that concerns me more about this is the second piece that could happen if there's an OPMA violation is that you could be in front of a judge and the judge could say, yeah, that decision that you thought you made, you didn't comply with the OPMA, therefore it's a null and void decision, so now you have to go back and do it again. And so you leaves the, potentially leaves the agency in limbo in terms of some of these decision-making processes. And so that's the other reason, and that's the bigger concern in my mind, is, you know, what happens to the decisions that are made if there's an error in the process that's substantial enough to cause a judge to say, nope, we're going to wipe the slate clean here, go back and do it again, so that the public is aware of what happened here. There you go. Just got to figure out which direction I need to point the clicker. So digging a little bit deeper into the OPMA, and we're going to focus, that's about as far as we're going to go into those principal ideas, kind of looking at this idea, then this, if you went back and looked at the OPMA from a historic point of view, our rough current version of what we have for the OPMA really came into existence in 1971. Before that, what we had was an OPMA that said, the public got to see the final vote. And there was kind of a realization at that point that, while interesting, really isn't informative, because where you learn what happens and how we get from that idea to a conclusion is all the dialogue that happens. And so in 1971, what we saw is this expansion of the OPMA's expectations that all action, all the deliberations, all the conversations have to happen in this public forum, where people get to see what's going on. The most recent addition we've seen to that is as we emerged from the COVID pandemic, obviously, I think nobody wants to go back to that, but what we saw was that public participation in meetings went way up in COVID, and I have two theories on that. And I think the one that is probably the most significant is, we were so desperate for content, we would watch anything. But what we, but I did it. I mean, I was watching school board meetings because it was relevant to things I needed to know about, and it's a tool to be able to do it. And so we saw an encouragement that we continue to use these tools. And then we also have seen this addition where it's no longer just expectation, where the public gets to watch the decision-makers make that decision, but it's an opportunity to share information. This is one of those changes that it's a change without a big difference in my mind, because most of us were doing it already. It's just got some formal structure now, where there's some requirements to accomplish this. And that's really what the OPMA is designed to do, is it's supposed to be this environment where there's an informed decision, informed knowledge about the decision-making is probably the best way to describe it. So who does the OPMA apply to? It applies to multi-member boards. Obviously, Tom Water City Council, congratulations, you meet that requirement. There are seven council members. It doesn't, just by compare and contrast, it doesn't apply to agencies that are headed by a single individual. Like I work for the Attorney General's Office, current Attorney General is Bob Ferguson. The OPMA doesn't apply to meetings of that, of our office, but it does apply to meetings of a multi-member body like y'all. It can apply to deeper into the agency, so if you set up a committee or something like that, that's doing something on your behalf, it can extend to them, so it's not just this high level. Kind of have to look deeper, look at what the charter, what is that this group is authorized to do. It also applies to city councils, it obviously applies to county councils and things along those lines. Who the OPMA doesn't apply to, and this is very specific and it's written in there, it doesn't apply to the courts, it doesn't apply to legislature, it doesn't apply to private organizations. That's a common question I get, one of the other hats I wear for the Attorney General's Office is on the open government enbuds. I get a lot of questions asking about homeowners associations outside of the scope of the OPMA. We're talking about a governmental function here. And it also doesn't apply to certain activities. So if the city council is sitting in a quasi-judicial matter, say you're hearing a land use petition, or you're actually sitting as the adjudicator of that, like in a judicial kind of role, that meaning that that action is actually also outside the scope of the OPMA. It doesn't apply to collective bargaining, it doesn't apply to Administrative Procedures Act, like rulemaking, which is really more of a state issue. And then it feels also licensing and purring issues, similar to what sitting in the adjudicated capacity, that also doesn't apply to the actions if you're sitting in that limited capacity. Encourage folks to think about it from, yes, it does apply to us, and then go looking for a specific, okay, do we fit within one of these four exceptions? Talk with legal counsel to make sure you're squarely within one of those exceptions and just be cautious if you're thinking about it. Where I see more issues is talking about committees and things like that. And they think, oh, it's a committee, it doesn't apply to the committee. It could, you have to look at, you know, where did the committee come from? So the basic requirements, probably not going to be a surprise for anybody. All the meetings, and we'll talk about what a meeting is, of governing body, which is a multi-member group like the city council here, of a public agency, so we've checked all three of those boxes, have to be open to the public. This is also where the legislature has worked in that encouragement that we continue to use these, the tools that are up on the screen this evening, whether it's Teams or Zooms, ways for people to participate remotely, because like I said, during pandemic, we saw a huge increase in people's ability to participate and inform themselves as to why government was doing it, what it was doing. Yes, of course.
Yeah, as representatives of the city, we often serve on the boards of different nonprofit organizations, and some of those have charters to where the entirety of the board members are elected officials from different jurisdictions. If that's the case, you have a nonprofit that's purely governed by local elected officials, is that, are meetings of that board subject to the OPMA?
Potentially, yes. There is a case that came out of, and there's an AG opinion talking about this. You have to look into, you know, what's the origins of this group? Are they serving a governmental function? It's a four-part test, so potentially it could. You need to look at factors such as, you know, where did this organization come from? Who formed it? Who controls it? Where do they get their funding? Who controls the day-to-day operations? Those are the four factors. You kind of have to look through each one of those, and it's not a two and two is a tie. You kind of have to look at it holistically and say, okay, taking all these factors into consideration, we think it is, or maybe it's not. So you really have to, it's a nuts and bolts kind of question. There's no, there's not a, oh, the answer is X kind of thing, you have to really kind of look at it. Thank you, though.
Got it, thank you.
So when it comes to this, I mentioned this already, is when it comes to a governing body, it's obviously the city council, it can be committees, subcommittees, when they're acting on your behalf, when they're given some delegated authority, if they're taking public testimony, if they're taking public comment, something that you would normally do, but you have tasked a subgroup with. As compared with, if it's purely an advisory group, let's say that the city council was looking at an issue, and so you formed a subcommittee to talk to other similarly sized cities around the state to see how you're doing with transportation planning and to bring a report back to council to say, here's what we found out, and it's purely advisory, doesn't have any impact, it doesn't bind you to something, very likely not subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. What you have to watch out for in those situations is if that group has some kind of de facto gatekeeping. Sometimes we see it come up with grant reviews, and so the committee is going to review the grant applications and bring back the top five candidates. Now we have a problem, we have an issue with the OPMA because they, you have inherent gatekeeping, some decision-making that these folks are doing. So you have to kind of watch that balance with the committees that you're creating. So what is a meeting? And not to be, I guess redundant here, a meeting is a meeting. A meeting is when there's a quorum of the board present, having some kind of a conversation. And when I say present, I don't actually mean physically in the same space. You can have a meeting arise in virtually, in virtual, through social media, it can happen through a Zoom meeting. What it means, it's more looking at, is there a conversation going on? Is there a quorum, you know, in this case, would four of you be having a conversation about something that the city is considering? One of the nice things about that is if you are three, you don't have that quorum. What we have to pay attention to is kind of, I've, kind of quorum creep, where you start off with two, and then you have a three, and then you have a four. I'll talk about a couple of examples in a second where this has happened. That's really the piece, you have to look at what it is that you're, what it is that you're doing. Are you taking action on behalf of something the city would be considering, something that the council is reviewing? What you entitled, what these things are called, doesn't matter, it's really a functions test. It really looks at, are we having this conversation? Are we talking about something that is a city council issue? We could call it a meeting, we can call it a retreat, we can call it a study session. It's really looking at content, it's not looking about titles. And so occasionally people are like, oh, this is just a board retreat, we don't have to do this. Yeah, you do, you're still having those kinds of conversations, the quorum will be present, you're discussing issues, long-range planning for the city, whatever the case may be, but look, I've moved forward. There we go. There is one exception in here, simply passively receiving information is okay, but it's also, in my way, it's also really scary. And because what happens is, like I said, you can have a meeting between, you know, occur without being physically present. And that's exactly what happened in this case in San Juan Island, was this was a, this was a planning commission. And they were having, they were discussing, two of the board members of this commission were discussing an issue that they were, they were reviewing. And there were seven on that as well, they were fine, only two of them were having this conversation. Then the two of them looped in a third person, and what they didn't realize was that the third person also had looped in a fourth person. And so behind, because of this unintentional creep, they unintentionally stepped over the quorum line. And what the court found, we know about this because obviously we went to the Court of Appeals, the court looked at, was there an intent? Was there really an intent to have this conversation, to step into a formal meeting type of scenario? Formal meeting, you know, having a, I don't mean in terms of a called meeting, but in terms of having a conversation. And it said, no, this was kind of one of those unintentional things. And I think what really saved them in this case was when they found themselves, you know, all of a sudden in the magic number four, because they were over that quorum line, their next action was key. The next action was they did nothing, they stopped. And so there was, the court said, you know, while there was four, they didn't intend to have this conversation. As compared to what happened in this case out of the city of Seattle, you might recall a few years ago, there was a discussion of a head tax in Seattle, passed on a Friday afternoon, there was some public outcry, the media was covering it, covering it, and then Monday morning, there was a vote by the same city council, and it vaporized. And so people were trying to figure out, how did we get from full forward to full stop this fast? Through public disclosure requests and then litigation to discovery, what they found was a series of communications occurred over the weekend between members of the city council. And there wasn't just a one or two kind of thing, there was this ongoing pattern, including some communications by some of the staffers, trying to figure out how the, how the city council was going to vote on Monday if it came up again. And so court looked at, okay, look at this, look at this course of conduct. And the court in that case said, yeah, we think there was an intent to have a conversation out of the public view to figure out what was going to happen on Monday. And that's, that's in the city of Seattle, there's the difference between them, is they found that there was an intent to have this conversation versus what had happened in San Juan Islands, where it was a conversation that's kind of morphed. But you always have to be careful with those, especially in the world we're working in today with, because it can happen in social media, it can happen over the phone, it can happen through email, it can happen through a combination of all of these, which is why, you know, when I talk with folks, one of the best practices is, obviously, just don't do it, bring your conversations to this. One common thing that comes up is, you know, there'll be an issue or an agenda item for the next, for the next meeting, and a council member will say, find something, and they'll say, oh, I'm going to forward this on to my colleagues for part of the conversation. Best practice in my mind is work through an intermediary, give it to your, give it to your board clerk, so that there, it takes the ability of the respond all button, because responding just takes it back to the clerk, and the clerk hopefully isn't acting as the center hub of this wheel and fostering communications, that you typically don't do that. It just, and the reason I bring that up is because these communications can get dicey, because you, you know, I search something as a council member, and then my colleague council member decides, oh, I want to add something to this conversation, they provide more information, and then another one provides more information. And all of a sudden, it goes from this appearance of, are they really just sharing information? Or are they having a conversation? And you just have to be cautious of it. So the best practice in my mind is, you know, send records to the court clerk, to your clerk of the board, let the clerk of the board package that and share it. If for some reason you think you need to share it with your colleagues, blind copy is a great, is a great way to do it, because it removes the ability to respond all. I have this thing in my office that says that no good comes from the respond all button, and I think it's very true. It's just things that don't need to happen, because it's just easy to engage in this conversation. The other thing to keep in mind with this idea of simply receiving information without comment is not a meeting. This is also partially what allows going to trainings, like the Washington County of City, Washington County of City officials puts on annual trainings. You can go to those and gather that information. My advice in going to those trainings, if four of you are going, don't sit together, because inherently it's like, oh, and you turn to, hey, we should, and then you're like, oh, wait a second. Hopefully, the light bulb goes off, it's like, oh, we shouldn't have this conversation now. But that's what also partially allows you to go to those kinds of trainings, where you see that passive receipt of information. So the idea of what is action? Action is obviously another component of what it takes to have a meeting. Like I said, it has to be a public agency, it has to have a quorum of you present, and then there has Um, and then there has to be action. This is what I was talking about, the change in nineteen seventy-one, where we went from action back then was final action. That's still part of action. That's the final step. But it, you know, one of my colleagues used to describe it as, you know, it's the sausage being made, and I'm not sure if that's a good thing or a bad thing, seeing the sausage being made, quite honestly. Um, but you get to see everything. People get to see the dialogue. They get to see the disagreements between you uh in terms of where the city should go and really get informed that, oh, this was really robustly discussed, and people understand how you get to your decision-making point. Um, and that's really what an action is is all-inclusive. When our courts have looked at this, there were this couple AG opinions looking at this. The courts look at this from a liberal point of view, because this is a remedial statute. And so the courts are going to say, you know, we expect this to happen in the public kind of sector, uh, the public kind of environment. So it took looking at, you know, what is public testimony? They're gonna say, oh, this is gonna try to, if it logically fits within that, they're not going to limit that for some reason. Um, and it's really that idea. All those discussions need to happen, which is also the problem with uh those meetings that actually potentially could happen via email. People don't get to see email. They'll send a public disclosure request. People don't get to see phone calls and meet and meetings can happen via phone calls. That's happening out. If those do happen, those are happening not in this public forum, and there's the crux of the problem right there. One of the things to keep in mind is that the OPMA is triggered irrespective of whether you actually make a final decision. It's such a broad definition. It's the it's the process. And so some 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 topics don't reach a resolution point. They just kind of peter out, and you're like, okay, we're not going anywhere with this one. It's still kind of a mutual kind of a consent agreement not to do it, but there's no formal vote, still subject to the OPMA. And of course, final action. Final action is is the crux. People get to see what it is that the council does. They get to see how you vote, which means there you you're not allowed to do polling. You're not allowed to do silent votes. I talked with an agency a while ago, and they were contemplating doing a vote via email and making that, maybe making that, well, they're gonna make the the uh the vote public later on. I was like, well, that either is a violation of the OPMA flat out, or it looks like polling. Either way, you have a problem. Final decisions have to happen in this kind of public forum, where people get to see how it is that you've how it is you vote on any specific issue. That's even the case, uh, and we'll talk in a couple of seconds, a couple of minutes here about executive session, which is where you get to go out of the public view for very limited purposes, with maybe one exception, and I'm not convinced on that one yet either. Um, even if you get to go into executive session for the conversations and certain topics, final decision still has to come back out into the public arena. People, even if you go into for one of the permissible purposes, you still have to come back to this arena, and people get to see, I vote yes or I vote no. That's that's a key piece. If you look at the bedrock principle within the public records, as Public Records Act, no other one. We're talking about the Open Public Meetings Act. Um, it's really this idea of public attendance. Uh, people get to walk in. You can't place conditions on folks being able to attend. Uh, which means, as happened here this evening, people literally, you know, found a place to park, walked in the door, took a chair. That is, that is standard. You cannot have, in the current environment, you can't have sign-up sheets. You can't take attendance as they come in. Um, people get to come in and watch the process. Doesn't mean it's the wild, wild west. You can set reasonable rules of conduct. We'll talk about a couple of those along the way. Uh, it's still your meeting, uh, but people get to attend without without those without those kinds of conditions. They have to be generally applicable conditions. This is one of those new things in the OPMA for the last couple of years, and it's so new, we don't have any case law on what it really means yet. Um, so if you're considering setting some kind of a condition applicable to the general pop, to the general public, I always encourage folks, two things. One is obviously talk with counsel about, you know, what we should be doing here. What's the legal risk? Um, and encourage to think about, what's the least restrictive thing we can do to accomplish our goal? Um, and I just think that's, you'll be in a much better place if you get challenged to say, we know, we considered A, B, and C, and C was the least restrictive to accomplish our goal. Um, obviously, a judge could disagree with you, but it shows you gave it good deliberations. Um, and again, we're going back to this idea that there's encouragement that we continue to use the remote, the remote access tools. Um, and I've seen some pretty creative solutions to that. I know of one agency that actually owns a radio station. Um, and so they broadcast all of their meetings over the over the air. Um, one other thing to keep in mind, when you start talking about public attendance, as commonly happens, is folks attending the meetings, uh, so it's kind of, I was gonna give an example, my phone is in the bag though, so I can't do that. Um, they'll pull out their phone, and they want to start recording these meetings. By their definition, these are public meetings. While Washington is a two-party consent state for private conversations, obviously, a key word difference there. We're talking public versus private. So that doesn't mean that, you know, if a member of the public all of a sudden rushed the dais and was putting a phone right in your face and yelling, say that again, say that again. That's one of those things, not okay. Um, but if member of the public was, you know, in the, simply sitting here, held up their phone, was recording this, that's okay. That's this is a public meeting. Um, there was a small eastern Washington town that made some unfortunate decisions and didn't allow that to happen, ended up having one of the public members of the public arrested. Um, and it didn't go well for that city or the sheriff that arrested them, so please don't do that. Um, it doesn't happen very often. It was just a really unfortunate day.
I have a question for clarification. So this evening, we'll be having a, uh, obviously, a lot of public comment. We do have a sign-up sheet, and that and that is not what you're speaking to.
That is not what I'm speaking to. I think that's one of the reasonable rules. We were doing that before. Um, the public records, excuse me, I'm stuck in public records today. I don't know why. Before the OPMA changed and required public comment, we could have those reasons. We could have sign-up sheets. I think that's still one of the reasonable rules for the orderly conduct of the meeting. You can have people sign up. You can set rules in place in terms of everybody gets three minutes, um, those kinds of things.
Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think it's back on the other slide. You, the comment that you made about having a um an executive session.
Yes.
Or making a decision to, that, and you said that after that, the um folks that are in that meeting are required to say what happened or how they voted or what the topic was. The topic is announced ahead.
Topic isn't, yes, sorry. If I, let me clarify. Uh, thank you for 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 being, if I, if that's, if that's what you're, it wasn't what I was trying to convey. Um, what I was trying to convey with that is that if you go into executive session for one of those permissible purposes, um, what's happens in executive session is supposed to remain confidential. Um, and so the dialogue that happens isn't supposed to be shared externally. Um, but if you're going to make a final decision, that cannot happen in executive session. The final decision has to come back out into the open forum like this. Um, and there'd have to be typically a a motion to do X, second, and a vote. That has to happen in this in this context.
So you can have all kinds of discussions and discuss, have all kinds of information and so forth, and it doesn't come out to the public. Is that correct?
That's, that is the expectation. There's a couple, there are, you know, and there's an expectation that council members maintain the confidentiality of that. Provided it's a proper, it's a properly called executive session for a proper purpose. That is an expectation. Um, but like I said, the vote is supposed to come back out to here. Um, a good example is, let's say that you're going to hire a new city executive. Um, I'm sorry, Mayor. Um, and that, uh, so you're doing interviews. So you're 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 evaluating the qualifications of an applicant for for public employment. You could then have that conversation in, in that executive session. Um, in that situation, you have to be careful to talk about the qualifications of Morgan Damaro for that position, and then the qualifications of Melissa Drury for that position. And not get into, well, which do we like better? Which one should we hire? It's really supposed to be an individualized assessment and not that compare and contrast. You have to be careful with it. Um, and it can be consensus, too. It's not just a formal vote. So if you find yourself having those conversations in executive session, and so do we have agreement? Um, you've probably gone too far.
I I understand it as far as personnel is concerned. Uh, when it is a discussion that impacts the community or eventually impacts the community um, as I was scared tonight. Um, uh, I think that if some something breeds a little bit of often those executive meetings, um, you know, people wanting information, or when did that happen, or how did it happen? And I don't think a lot of folks are satisfied, well, it was decided, or it was talked about, or it was brought up in an executive meeting, and I can't talk to you about it. So I'm just saying that, um, I I think that that's uh something that needs to be looked at, because I think it's misused.
You know, it's, you know, like.
Not that you're gonna look at it.
I, you know, and I.
Uh, I'm I'm just, I'm just suggesting that that's that's so, over the years that I've been here, that's been an issue.
And obviously, I I encourage restraint. I, you know, when I'm talking with the historically, talking with my boards and commissions about executive session, I always go back to statute forty-two thirty-one ten, uh, subpart one, and then there's countless exceptions, reasons why you can go into executive session and make sure that we're going in specifically for one of the allowed reasons. Um, you can go in for the purpose of, um, and the thing, obviously, if considering the sale of a piece of property the city owns, where if you had that conversation in a public forum, it would cause you to not get the highest bid for that piece of property, because uh, or if you're going to purchase a piece of property, the flip side and say, okay, I think we can budget three point two million dollars for this purchase. Uh, guess what? The property owner is going to want to sell it to you. Um, versus being able to have that, the negotiations that happen in in that that kind of forum. Or you can go in for the purpose of getting advice for getting legal advice. Obviously, attorney has to be present. Um, but the discretion, I mean, you can choose not to go into executive session. It's an allowance to go in. You don't have to go in, but is there's often good reasons why the why there is these specific reasons to go in. Um, so I can't tell you, uh, you know, I it's I can't tell you when it's when you should, when you shouldn't, or anything like that, but there are these allowances to happen.
I guess I'm just saying that, like everything else, sometimes that's abused. And uh, things are talked about. I understand what you're saying about purchase of property uh, at the beginning, when you're talking about that, and I understand personnel.
And, yeah, and that's.
So, but but there are other things over.
Getting to your idea.
Get discussed in a meeting like that, and then, um, anyway, anyway, I just wanted to bring bring that up to say that, you know, that's something I wish was the whole executive session thing I wish was looked at, and it has different different ways that it gets applied in different communities and different forms of government where um, where it's impact, it impacts uh how you make your rules and laws. So that's all I'm.
Yeah, and I have, I have seen situations where either working with with legal counsel, present in meetings, or other city council members, county council members, whoever, where if it starts to migrate, when the conversation starts migrating into a not allowed purpose.
Yeah.
Uh, to to call a, call your colleagues on, um, and say, you know, I don't think we're in for a permissible purpose. Get legal advice. See if you're still within the realm of why you should be in there, or if your concerns are justified, where either, you know, and and sometimes it's unintentional, and I'm not so naive as to think sometimes it's misused. I've heard of examples where we're going in for getting attorneys, getting legal advice from our attorney. The attorney is not part of the conversation. You're not getting legal advice. That's kind of one of the essential parts.
Yeah.
Um, and so it's also self-policing. So amongst the seven council members in this situation, if you should find yourself in there pushing pause, say, okay, are we are we really in for a permissible purpose? Because that would be problematic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't mean to get a whole.
No.
Um, uh, a- area of education here, but I appreciate it very much.
No, you just made one of the latest slides a lot shorter, so perfect. Uh. Again, um, this idea that, uh, you know, we're encouraged to use remote participation tools. Um, and the reason this was is in here is because we've seen a couple of moves. I think this is coming in the future. Um, I don't know when to let. This is my crystal ball that I bought at the dollar store, so it's not the best quality. Um, it's a little cracked. Some kid was playing with it, dropped on the floor. Um, but I think we will see this future. At one point, the legislature was making this mandatory. And I think because of some technology realities, uh, city of Tomwater is slightly different than some of the smaller jurisdictions, some mosquito districts that literally don't have offices and work out of people's garages. Um, those kinds of things. Um, and so I think this is just a placeholder for seeing this in the future, was seeing school districts being placed under some heightened obligations uh, to record meetings and things like that that aren't applicable to cities and towns yet. Uh, but I think it's coming, so it just kind of is something to watch for. Um, the new change I mentioned that really isn't a change is this idea of public comment. It is now required, and and Mayor, your comment about reasonable rules are exactly correct. I think you can, and this is, you can have reasonable rules for the orderly conduct of your meeting, which involves having people sign up. Uh, putting time limits. It's not open forum. People get to go on for for ever, as long as they want. You, I mean, like this evening, you have a lot of people present tonight, but I'm sure want to make comment. And so you can put reasonable limits so that there's a reasonable opportunity to make that happen. Um, you have two choices when it comes to this, and first off, I should mention that oral comment or written comment, this new public comment requirement, is at every regular meeting. Um, and then we'll talk about regular meeting versus special meeting in a second. But this only applies to regular meetings, and you have two choices as to how you accomplish this. First is you can take oral comment, much like I'm doing this evening. You would invite members of the public up, give them whatever length of time that you designate to say, what would you like to share with us? Um, what do we need to know? And that's that new piece that was in that earlier slide. It's not just being informed, but informing the governing bodies of how the community feels about whatever issues is is on the agendas. Um, you do have an expectation or requirement that if somebody has has a disability, limited mobility, difficulty making it to the meeting, that you accommodate that if reasonable. Um, and I've seen some agencies get pretty creative with that. Literally, one case where they they, the clerk of the board held up a cell phone and just held it up to the mic, and so that person could participate remotely. There is an obligation to accommodate that. You can, my best advice to that is, in your agendas, put that out there, and say, you know, we're accepting public comment. If you need accommodation, please contact the clerk of the board by five o'clock the day before, or noon the day of the meeting, whatever. So you can put something in place versus trying to do this ad hoc. I think that would be okay. Um, the other possibility is written public comment. And again, you can put reasonable rules in place for this and say, we're accepting written, some agencies moved completely to written public comment. Um, and but it's, it comes down to you put reasonable rules, things like size, uh, four pieces of paper, something like that, single spaced, uh, so you don't get this massive treatise of of something, something that the council could reasonably review. The one key piece in this is that it has to be distributed to the governing body in advance of the meeting. If you choose to take written public comment, my my suggestion is that at the start of the meeting, uh, whoever is the chair, put that on the record and have it reflected in the minutes to say, we accept the oral comment, excuse me, we we accept the written comment, where you see fifteen written pieces, fifteen comments, those were distributed to the council as of noon this this afternoon. Um, and so it's reflected, uh, because at some point, the state auditor is going to come in, and if you say you're taking written public comment, they're gonna want to make sure you accomplish that, which is why I put that on the record. Oh, yeah. It's forty-two fifty-six two forty is where, forty-two fifty-six two four zero. Welcome. Made a comment a little bit ago that these are public meetings. They are still your meetings, and why there is an expectation for having for having public comment now at regular meetings, uh, that I said, like Louis said, it's not the wild, wild west. Um, and so this is where there's reasonable rules of conduct can come into play. I also recommend that in terms of their expected response within the OPMA is kind of what you would think is proportional. The first idea is you engage with the the whatever's causing the confrontation. If it's an individual, you ask the person to step away from the mic for three minutes or up, or to, you know, step back from the dais, whatever the issue is. Then maybe you recess the meeting, um, and then maybe you reconvene and invite members of the public back. Um, ultimately, if that doesn't work, you could actually, you could actually move this meeting to a different location. You're required to take members of the media with you if they're present, unless it's the media that's being disruptive. Not seen that actually happen. Um, but there is that expectation, expectation. My suggestion is for the for the chair uh to work with counsel and and, you know, have a have a on the back page of your of your binder, have a break, break glass in case of emerging, see kind of thing. I think this is where that town I mentioned in Eastern Washington got itself in trouble. They thought they had something they thought was disruptive, and they didn't handle it appropriately. And this is where you don't want to get caught flat-footed. You want to make sure you walk through that kind of approach in a logical, systematic kind of way. And if you're going to, if you're going to reconvene the meeting at a different location, you actually have to follow a specific legal process. And so you want to be basically have that, you know, in the event, you hopefully you will never need it. Uh, but we've seen some of the things recently where it's become necessary. Uh, part of that also means if you're taking testimony remotely using uh remote tools, uh, we've seen some really horrific things happening with people with video recently. Um, and so think about when you're taking public comment, it's oral public comment. You have a choice as to whether you want to turn the video on or not. Uh, and part of it is because, you know, I can I can hit a mute button much faster than, once an image is up on the screen, uh, it's much more difficult to unsee that kind of a thing. Um, so it's things to think about as you're thinking about interruptions and disruptions, and just think about the the what-ifs. Um, hasn't happened all that much, thank goodness, but we have seen some increases in this, which is why I wanted to mention it this evening, just to plan ahead, so you may possibly need it. So I told you I was gonna talk a little bit about meetings, and there are two, maybe three kinds of meetings. There are regular meetings, which are the meetings that happen because this is what your, this is what your schedule says. If the if the schedule says you meet every second Tuesday of the month, that's a regular meeting. Every other kind of meeting is a special meeting. You have some specific obligations when it comes to putting out an agenda for regular meetings. Has to be up on your website twenty-four hours in advance, and then, you know, I looked at that today, and I saw that the city had put the agenda out. Um, my advice, you can change. My advice, you can change the agenda for regular meetings. One of the provisions says that, put your agenda out 24 hours in advance. And then from time to time, they get changed. And the OPMA says that's okay when it comes to regular meetings. Typically, what I see is a motion from a council member that says, I make a motion to add a item, item 4.2 to the agenda. Second vote, if it passes, it's added. If it doesn't, and you can take that through, through to final action. I always encourage a little bit of restraint. So it's perfectly legal to do. But I always encourage restraint in doing that because when a final agenda looks very different from initial agenda, people start wondering what happened. And they start, you know, they're concerned about not knowing what's going on with government. That's a way to kind of foster that distress. Sometimes there's really good reasons to do it. And you can, you can, you can do it. With my boards and commissions, I always question, do we really need to do this tonight? Or can we schedule a special meeting to do this? Or can it hold over to the next meeting? And sometimes it couldn't, and we added, and it wound up. But I just encourage restraint if you're going to add something to a meeting. The other thing to keep in mind is do your best to get this agenda right. If you don't get the agenda published 24 hours in advance, if there's a technical violation, that, that's not going to negate the meeting. But do your best, and when it comes to these kinds of things. There are some exceptions for very small agencies. I'm just going to mention this in case one of you sits on a different agency that qualifies for, or you think might be very small. Give me a call, happy to talk through that. But since we're talking about the city of Tumwater, you don't qualify for this. But so I'll leave it at that. Every other kind of meeting is a special meeting. And what that means is something has come up that we need to deal with. Those can be called by the presiding officer, or they can be called by a quorum, a majority of the board members. This is the one thing you get to talk about outside of a meeting, is having a meeting. You can talk about having a meeting. Be super careful, obviously, to not talk about why you're getting together. But a majority of you could say, you know, we need to get together to talk about transportation planning. And we need to call a special meeting for that purpose. That's okay. You do have some very specific requirements. Much like the agenda requirement, you have to give notice of the meeting to all of the council members. You have to post that notice at the regular business office and wherever that special meeting is going to happen. What makes a special meeting different from a, microphone's for me. What makes a special meeting different from a regular meeting is I mentioned that in a regular meeting, you could add something to the agenda and take it through to final action. You cannot do that for a special meeting. Special meeting, you're, you can only take final action on whatever reason you said you were getting together to touch, whatever that issue was. So don't take it too far. You also have to be very careful as to why you say you're getting together. You have to give sufficient information. We just had a Supreme Court case talking about this, where the court said, you know, the notice of the meeting didn't give enough information as to why the board was getting together. It was too vague. It didn't give enough information. So if you're getting together to talk about transportation or paving on Linderson or whatever the issue is, be specific, be as specific as you can so that the public who's paying attention can say, oh, this is an issue I care about. Or, yeah, don't care about that one. I'm not going to go to that meeting. I'm not going to tune in for it. There is a third kind of meeting, or maybe a second, there's a special kind of special meeting. If there's an emergency, it's kind of an all bets are off. And which is why the pictures are on the, on the screen. Think about when Mount St. Helens erupted. That was one of those things that if, if cities, counties didn't meet right then, right there, as the ash cloud was spreading over Eastern Washington, there was going to be significant loss of property, possible death. People had to take immediate action. That's the kind of thing where if, if there's going to be that kind of imperiled, you can get together and deal with that, that issue. The courts have looked at this a couple of times now, and they've said economic loss is not enough. It really has to be that, you know, another two examples, two unfortunate examples. The town of Mapton and then the town of Lynn were facing wildfires over the last couple of years. The first one, the town disappeared, 80% of the town burned in less than a day. That's the kind of thing we're talking about. It's not the, well, this could just really be unfortunate. It's really that kind of thing and whatnot. I've been doing this for 25, seven years, and I have never done an emergency meeting. I did get somebody asked me, and I thought it was a good example. What if we have a water issue? And so we have to meet because there's a contamination issue with the water? Would that qualify? It's like, possibly, that I could be convinced of that one. But that's the kind of thing we're talking about where, you know, continuing to drink the water because it's contaminated could cause, you know, serious injury or to cause people to be hospitalized or something like that. I've talked about remote meetings already, so. Oh, no, see, this, I've talked about the other time I wrote meetings. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of my slides. Now, like I said, I don't want to go back to pandemic times. I don't think any of us do. In the event that there is a declared emergency, we are allowed to go back and implement some of what was done in, some of what we lived through when it came in the pandemic. So in the event that there's a declared emergency on the state or federal level, local level, then if this, if the council has determined that it couldn't have a meeting and keep everybody safe, it has the option of holding meeting all remotely. And nobody would be present in this room. Or having a hybrid, where some people would be present and say the public would be excluded. In those situations, you have to provide a remote participation tool, at least audio. And obviously, I would encourage the more is better. So if you can use a Zoom or Teams, do something like that. You have to make the, the governing, the agency has to make an affirmative decision that it can't have that meeting with reasonable safety. Again, this is brand new. We've seen no litigation on it. And this is one of those clauses in the OPMA that I hope lives in dormancy for decades. But if you get, if you're facing one of these, say that my example, the town of Lynn, that that would have been a good time for possibly, or we've seen this a couple of wildfire issues in Eastern Washington, that might be a time that this would be exercised. One thing to keep in mind that this is different than what's happening here this evening. I know that three of your council members are participating remotely. That is, that is permissible pursuant to your own rules. In fact, it's possible, and I've actually done this with a couple of my boards where nobody was present. Everybody, because it was a statewide committee, and so they were scattered all over the state. Everybody participated remotely. In those situations, you still have to have a physical location where somebody could walk in and be able to observe this. People sometimes get confused between those and say, oh, it's a remote meeting. We don't have to have a physical location anymore. You still have to have a physical location unless you're talking about one of these emergency situations. Executive session is going to be much shorter because, thank you, we covered most of it. I'll hit the high points. Basically, what it means is you have to go in for one of the permissible purposes in forty-two, thirty-one, ten. And it runs the gambit. There's, we've talked about a couple of them. My personal favorite is national security. I've never had to go in for one of those either. But you have to find one of those. You have to be, and I, I always go back and look at that list and say, why am I going in? You have to give notice of why you're going in. So the presiding officer, officer has to make the announcement. It should be on your agenda as well. I recommend not getting creative here, quote the statutes. The presiding officer has to say how long you're going to be in an executive session. And once that, once you make that call, you cannot come back into a regular session early. If you say you need 30 minutes and you only need 10, you've got 20 minutes to go get a cup of coffee. You can't reconvene early because other people may have gone to get a cup of coffee. You can extend as, if you say you needed 30 minutes and you needed additional time at the end of the 30 minutes, the presiding officer can come, has to come back out into regular session and make that announcement. Obviously, wouldn't happen here this evening, but I've seen this happen to an empty room with a bunch of chairs. It feels really weird. Still make the announcement, make sure that's reflected in the minutes of the, of the meeting, that those kinds of things have happened. Because, you know, it, when the auditor is looking at your processes in a full audit, they're going to be looking for that kind of information. Traveling, gathering, I've also talked about, we were talking about that first slide, talking about the idea of, you know, you can travel together to meetings. You can go to trainings together. There's a couple of AG opinions talking about this. Because of inherent human nature, you need to be super careful. It's the idea of, oh, we're together. This is really useful information we got from this training. How are we going to implement this at the, oh, wait a second, we've gone too far here. If you can keep yourself from, talk about everything else, you can travel together. But just be very cautious, and go to, you go to conferences together. Just be very careful not to talk shop. Take in what you know, what you're learning, and bring it back here and have that conversation here. One of the nuts and bolts requirements is you have to keep minutes. The only required content in your minutes now is the purpose of your executive session. Obviously, I recommend adding more to that. Beyond that, it's kind of your practice. I've read some minutes that are incredibly detailed. And I feel, I feel badly for the clerk of the board having to keep track of all that because it needs like a transcript. Other ones I've read, you can barely tell anybody was there. I'm more of an issues person. I would like to be able to say, okay, what happened? What were they talking about? What was the outcome? Tell me, so I can see where things went. But absent that, it's, it's kind of your practice as to how you want to do it. They do need to be approved. And typically, what that means is for tonight's meeting, your minutes will be approved at the beginning of the next meeting. That seems to be reasonable in the eyes of the court. Some, from time to time, minutes are wrong. And I've seen agencies have to go back and, and correct them. That is done, and to do that, it's not just a matter of editor's, editor. I would have it come back to this and somebody make a motion to amend the prior minutes. Keep it formal. Finishing off this evening with OPMA penalties. I already talked about the personal penalty piece. And I said, I'd really hate to see anybody have to be in a situation where you're writing a personal check. Or first off, you have to find your checkbook. But $500 for a first knowing violation, $1,000 for each subsequent violation. You're also paying attorney's fees on top of that. The agency is on the hook for those. There was a, one of the headlines I had on the case was a settlement for, I think it was $16,000. There was a case on the PRA side of things where the penalties were $15,000 and the attorney's fees were $45,000. So there's really repercussions for getting this wrong. There's, and this is something that if, if a member of the public brings a lawsuit against the agency for an OPMA violation, this is why. Because this is built into the OPMA. They want to encourage the transparency. And in order to get people to bring, bring the suits necessary, there has to be that kind of like, wait a second, I'm going to make a lawsuit and I'm still on the hook for $15,000, $45,000 if I'm successful. So it's a burden shifting and whatnot. And I've always talked about the other piece that concerns me with the penalties piece is if you get wrong your decisions. And just because it's a technical violation early in a, in a process doesn't mean the final decision is going to be null and void. A court would ultimately make that decision. But if it's, if it's fraught with problems all along the way, highly suspect, and I think, of course, likely to overturn that decision. To that event, I've seen some boards go back, think about third grade recess and call that do-over. I've seen boards go back and do that, or do the same thing where they're concerned about a technical violation early in the process and say, okay, we want, you can't, you can't make that prior violation go away. But you may be able to insulate the final decision by calling that do-over. Having that conversation again, talk to legal counsel if you're concerned about it. And sometimes that's, that's an appropriate thing to do. So there's an OPMA refresher. Thank you for the, the great questions along the way. And you made the final slides a lot easier. Any other questions I can hopefully answer for you?
Any questions from the council?
From the councils, by the way.
Council.
Thank you, mayor.
Any questions? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you again for inviting me this evening. I appreciate it.
All right, next item is public comment. And we do have an abundance of people for public comment. So at this time, we will receive public comment. You may comment on items related to city business not scheduled for a public hearing. A signup sheet, which I have here, so we will also have time for those who did not sign up for, to make public comment. When I call your name, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Each individual be limited to one three-minute period to make their remarks, regardless of the number of topics you wish to address. We do have a clock up here that will take care of, which will provide you the time. And so I want you to please pay attention to the clock. Just to make sure that people do not continue to go over. If you go over, I will be pulling up this particular card to have you wrap up your comments. You are not, shall not make comments. You shall make comments, all comments directed to the entire council as a whole and not to individual council members and not to members of the audience. You need to refrain from disruptive behavior such as booing, hissing, audible comments, cheering and clapping. So when I call your name, and I do believe we have some online editors also signed up for public comment?
Yes, many.
All right, so I think what I will do is go ahead and do those who are signed up remotely. And again, three minutes to those who are signed up remotely. And please pay attention to the time. So with that, we will start public comment.
Okay, I'm going to start with Marnie Jackson, followed by Walter Jorgensen.
Hello?
Hello, good afternoon, council members. This is Marnie Jackson of Langley, Washington. It is easy to cut down a tree. It's impossible to put it back. In considering whether to proceed with the planned removal of the David Meeker Gary Oak tree, please take time to allow due process, to allow actions in the Court of Appeals, to allow reflection and response from local tribes, to do consideration of kestrel nest sites and to understand the legal requirements to leave raptors undisturbed. And take into consideration the resounding feedback from your community. As elected officials, you serve the public. The public does not want this 400-year-old tree, middle-aged for this species, to be killed. If it is determined next year, next decade, or next century that the people want their elected officials to remove this tree for the public good, then it won't be too late to do so. Today, however, it is far too early. Quebec and Jamestown were new colonies when this tree sprouted. The only people to have walked this land were those whose ancestors have been here since time immemorial. Rembrandt and Cyrano de Bergerac were children. The Ming Dynasty ruled China, and Europe was embroiled in a 30-year war. Given what this tree has survived and how short our time is in comparison, can you find it in yourselves to give this process this more time for due consideration that it deserves? Please halt the planned cutting of the David Meeker oak and allow time to consider alternative solutions for your planned infrastructure improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Hold on, okay, I do not see Walt Jorgensen on. So I'm next going to go to Christina Minetti.
Are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Christina Minetti from Lakewood. And I'm here to ask you to. I've called, I've been called off guard. But there we go. I'm here to urge you, Mark, I'm a historian and a critical area. From what I've observed, the city of Tumwater seems to be ignorant of some of the fundamental facts. As a result, the city is acting in violation of the law and efficient wildlife that are supposed to inform the city's policymaking. It will.
Yeah, but you're breaking up. Is it possible you can submit your comments in writing?
Uh-oh, you can't hear me?
It is breaking up, ma'am.
Uh-oh, okay, I'll try to connect on a different computer. Thank you.
Next person?
Okay, I have a Tickmer Dunlop and I have a James Dunlop before them, but I don't, I can't identify them online. So I'm going to start with the, I'm not, I know I'm not saying their name right, but the last name is Dunlop.
Oh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm on the same internet connection as Christina Minetti, so hopefully I'm not breaking up as well. Regarding the oak, it's incredibly disappointing to hear that you're planning on cutting it down. And I really want to urge you to reconsider. My name is Tia Humeur Dunlop, and I live in Lakewood. And for the last many years, we've watched how the city has completely disregarded the importance of these trees. Let them be cut down left and right. And it's just been a hell just watching the way they've completely mistreated these trees. And this whole time, I've thought that it's just, this was just a Lakewood problem. And, you know, maybe other cities might be better. But to see that Tumwater is even, even more brashly disregarding the importance of Gary Oaks is just really disheartening. Like that, that tree is, is probably one of, one of the most, if not the most impressive Gary Oaks I've seen. And to, to cut it down, just thinking that it's theoretically a risk to. And, uh, to, to, to cut it down, just thinking that it's theoretically a risk to, um, traffic, I mean, every tree drops branches occasionally. What, you want to cut down every single tree in the entire city? You know, that, that tree has been there for centuries. Uh, it has a, you know, a connection to the native people. Just to cut it down for, for what? It, it doesn't make any sense. Please listen to what everybody, everybody's urging you. Don't cut it down. It, it just doesn't make any sense. Like, if you cut it down now, ten people, ten years from now, twenty years from now, people are going to be still remembering that tree and just thinking how much of a shame it was that, uh, it was cut down for, for nothing. So please reconsider and, uh, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person? Now I'll have Beowulf Brower.
Hi there, uh, Beowulf Brower, Olympia, Washington. Well, here we go again. Uh, I'm not going to grill you today on the quality of the risk assessment done on the tree, legality of violating the migratory bird treaty act or the associated RCW from state of Washington, the wanton violation municipal code or the falsehood perpetrated by certain city staff pursuant to this tree. These points have been made and will be made. They're all demonstrably true. They are also not the fault or the doing of this council. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I stand here once again to remind you are the legislative branch. The power to vote on actions and path laws and ordinances lies with you. I plead to you now, do not let the executive branch, the port, or anyone else deprive you of your ability to represent your constituents. Tonight, God willing, you will have the chance to allow this wrong to be righted. Listen to the citizens for their allowed. Listen to the science for it is clear. Listen to your conscience for it is loud and clear. All we seek is a second opinion, would you not grant it for an elder of our nation? As you've witnessed today, or yesterday, rather, a late season windstorm came across to call it the other day. Dozens of trees fell across this county as they always do. From this oak, this alleged hazard that scantily clings to stability, if you are to believe the report presented to the city, not a single tree, not a single twig fell from its wizened crown. This tree cannot speak in this defense, but I postulate that it seeks to show what is unable to say. I pray that you listen to it. Thank you for your time and keep up the good fight.
Thank you. Next person?
The next to speak will be Sue Danver.
I'm going to pass at this time for the people in the audience. I can submit a written comment if I choose after tonight. Is that true?
Uh, you can always send comments.
Okay. Yes, um, yes, I'm going to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person? Excuse me, excuse me. All right, I'm, I'm sorry, I was not aware of your condition. So what I can do, what I can do is I can then go to you next. Right. So, um, there is, this is not more than normal, so I'm, I'm sorry for the inconvenience and we will, we, how many more do we have online?
We have nine people left.
Okay, let us finish this so we make sure we do not miss anyone because sometimes going back and forth, someone gets missed. So go ahead with the next person.
The next to speak will be Steve Erickson.
Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Steve Erickson, I live on Withby Island. I'm a botanist, restoration ecologist and an activist. You can act and I'm urging you to do so to prevent that tree from being cut down. What you do will reflect not only on you, individuals and members of the council now, but on the body of the city council for years to come. I'm going to tell you a story about something that happened in Oak Harbor on Withby Island where I live. There was a large old oak tree near the post office, about three hundred fifty years old. There were concerns about its condition. It was a matter of public controversy. The mayor and city council met in secret and they made plans and they executed those plans. They cut that tree down at five o'clock on a Sunday morning so that the public would be totally taken by surprise. Now, if you let that tree get cut now, what's, it's going to reflect not just on you, but on the body of the city council for years to come, even though when you're not there. In Oak Harbor, people do not trust their city council now and it's been a decade. Totally different people, totally different mayor. Now you've got a rogue mayor. I'm just going to say it outright. Uh, the mayor is ignoring federal law, the migratory bird treaty act. He's ignoring state law regarding historic and archaeological resources. He's ignoring local law. Your own historic commission refused to grant permit for this. Grant an exception and variance to allow the tree to be removed. This is the time for your, in your public service, when you have the opportunity to exercise oversight and act in the greater public good, the greater long-term public good. Your mayor is attempting to evade the laws I mentioned before. The reality is that after five o'clock tomorrow afternoon, that tree and the nesting kestrels in it will be cut as fast as that mayor is able to, uh, arrange. Basically, once the tree is cut down, it can't be stood back up again. Doesn't matter if other arborists and opinions think that that tree could be saved. Doesn't matter what the laws are. There's no remedy. The tree is gone, the birds are gone. And a significant portion of the history of Tomwater, of the history of the native peoples who lived it there uh, will be lost. I'm going to just close and say, I urge you to take whatever steps you need to take tonight to prevent that tree from being cut down. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, no clapping, please. Thank you. Next person?
We'll have E S H.
Are you there? Do you see them connected?
I, I do, but they're not unmuting.
Uh, can you please unmute? Okay.
So we'll go to Mick Miazio.
All right.
Hi, my name is Mick Miazio. I live in Shelton, Washington. I am an arborist. I've been an arborist for about fifteen years. I've been a certified arborist for, um, more than a decade. I'm also a certified tree risk assessor. I would like to clarify something about, uh, Davis Meeker oak. That tree is not dying. This is a notion perpetuated by people that want to cut it down. Last Friday, I went to court to see the restraining order um, against, uh, the cutting of the oak be challenged where the council representing the parties wanting to cut down the oak um, perpetuated that notion, which I um, politely informed them that is not the case. They quoted the, the arborist report, which I don't believe is saying that. And I would like somebody, preferably the council, to hold these people accountable for the misinformation that they're spreading. If you go and stand under the tree, you will see that it's in pretty good health for being four hundred years old. On a personal note, um, I was born in Poland and I came to this country to live my American dream, which is being an arborist. And that's why I came to the state of Washington. Primarily for the trees and the beautiful nature. Um, this tree being four hundred years old is a heritage remnant of the time where the air was pure. You could drink the water from the rivers and the streams. And, you know, our ecosystem was, was much better. I can't quite call it an old growth because, um, because of its singularity, it doesn't fall under that definition of the ecosystem. Um, but, you know, it's equal to dog furs that are eight feet in diameter and are four hundred years old. Uh, or the redwoods. It's in that same category as far as I'm concerned. And to say, you know, drop the branch, which again, another notion that's perpetuated that is that the branch fell into the lane of traffic, uh, which is not correct. A part of the branch that fell ended up in that lane. Uh, how big I'm not sure, but the majority of the branch fell under the tree, uh, where there's no targets right under the tree. That area is protected. The targets are transitory. Um, this is the process, you know, identifying targets and, and the possibility of harm. Uh, that's the due process that happens when we think about this sort of things.
Three, three minutes.
Thank you, um, for your time and again, uh, these trees are the last of, of the beautiful ecosystem we had and, uh, they should not be rushed in cutting down. Thank you.
Next person? Will be Danny B.
Hello? You hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. Please do not murder this tree. So many of us are, the town are still unaware of the danger facing this icon, which has been a fixture of our community for much longer than anyone alive today. This tree was here long before our grandparents were born. Please do not come in quietly and take it down without giving the people who love it more chances to speak in its defense. And if it still must go, a meaningful chance to say goodbye before you remove it. Please do not kill it without first fighting to save it. Your communications with the public acknowledge that there are other options and local arborists specify how feasible these would be. With pruning and cables, the risks, which many arborists say were overstated to begin with, could be mitigated. The trees should be cared for, not killed. Public safety is always a concern, but there are risks everywhere in life. Every tree could potentially fall. Have you studied every ever tree by every road in Tomwater with the same degree of scrutiny? What about the buildings on the historic register? Do they all align with current safety codes? It would be hypocritical to destroy this tree for its supposed dangers if other risks are not receiving similar attention. As a lifelong resident of Western Washington, I'm very familiar with the danger of falling trees. And I've even had some close calls, but I still love and value them, even after one fell on my car. The safest thing to do regarding trees would be to cut down any that were within a hundred yards of any path a person could ever conceivably cross. With, after all, with our wind and our rain, even the healthiest tree can be uprooted and fall across the road. It happens again and again. But I have seen places like that, places without trees, and I could never live in a place so barren. We are not called the evergreen state lightly. Our trees are part of our identity and this tree is part of our community. If you had a sick loved one and there were solid treatment options available, would you tell the doctor, nah, that sounds too expensive. Let's just get this over with now? Because it seems like that's what we're doing here. Have we learned nothing from history? How often have we suffered because someone chose the option that was cheap, fast and easy, rather than stopping to do their research and worth a bit more effort? This tree has a long history of people investing in it. Time and again throughout the decades, the people have spoken saying that this tree is important and that we should protect it. This was so important to us that it was even given special status to try to prevent it from being carelessly destroyed. This tree has survived countless earthquakes and storms and witnessed every milestone in our nation's history. As a teacher and a mother, I find myself more and more understanding that they're right when they say that we do not inherit the earth from our ancestors. We borrow it from our children. They cannot uncut that tree. Once it is gone, it's gone. How will our children's children judge your actions here? Will they find a record of efforts being made to repair the tree and save it? Will they see that there was consensus in the community about the need to cut it? Or will they only learn that despite controversy and protests, politicians use their power to go against the will of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person?
I have Jenna Cook-Holmland.
Are you there? Yes, go ahead. We can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I have a small statement, um, about the tree. Uh, I feel passionately about the tree because I, I happen to be just a stay at home mom. Uh, I drive by that tree every day going to store and it resonates with me so passionately because I'm a Native American woman. And not many Native Americans have the respect that people deserve to give in certain communities. And so I feel very passionate about the tree being cut down as such an awful, terrible thing because it, it is just such a beautiful, beautiful tree that has stood the test of time through even my, my ancestors. So, so I just simply wanted to say that I am very against the tree being cut down. And then I hope that everybody can reconsider having to chop it down, have that empty space of just making the road maybe bigger, the airport bigger. There's a lot of things that you could make there, but the tree could never be there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Now I have a Nicole Mercier.
Are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
I do not have a lot to say. Um, everyone has spoken and everything that people have said is what, what I feel. Um, I spoke to the, um, Department of Fish and Wildlife, US Department of Fish and Wildlife today, who is going to go over and, uh, do an assessment of the situation with the kestrels. Uh, I believe she's going on Thursday, so, uh, hopefully the tree will still be standing at that time. Uh, but I just want to say that I'm vehemently opposed to this. I think that this is a hasty move. It's a rush to do this for whatever reason I can't imagine. We had a huge windstorm today. Nothing fell. Nothing fell down. And that should give you an idea of how I can't, I, I can't even find a word for this about how unfair it is to rush to do this. We need more information. We need more assessment. The assessments, I read all of them. It, it, it is not, it, I don't believe that it is a true assessment. I, I don't believe in what the person, I can't remember the guy's name, but, um, I don't think that it was proper. I don't think that it was correct. And I, I think that we need more information and if it is really, uh, opposed for, uh, someone's death, then we would have to take it down, but I don't think there's evidence of that. So, um, everyone else has spoken very eloquently and I would just like to leave it at that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's it online.
Great, thank you. All right, now I will move to those in council chambers. Uh, the first person, uh, and again, come to the podium. Uh, what's that? Did you need, did you need to speak first, ma'am? Okay, so we'll go in order of signup. Pamela Hanson, come to the podium.
Thank you, mayor, city council. I'll keep this short. Pamela Hanson, PO Box one four five two one, Tomwater, Washington. Uh, one, I do not agree with cancellation of the June eighteenth regular council meeting. Two, the one point seven million dollar cost overrun of the Capitol Boulevard Trosper Road uh, roundabout. I do not agree with increasing staff's authority to pay that. It needs to be an open public meeting and review. Three, I'm going to take you back in time to Mayor Ralph Fosgood's administration. Some people know and some people don't know that in the nineteen Some people know and some people don't know that in the nineteen eighties, both Ralph Ausgood and I reported to the comptroller of the Department of Revenue. That is my connection with him, along with testifying before he was mayor at the first, the very first comprehensive plan for the city of Tomwater. Um, what I experienced when Mayor Ralph Ausgood was mayor is his style. When an issue was as important as this, it came to a full council vote. And his vote was part of that council vote, not the all-important vote. So I believe that this is a big enough issue, that that's what needs to happen with this issue after it is fully vetted um, with the public and anyone concerned. Number four, this is the flyer that has been, I, I don't know when it was created. It doesn't have a date on it. Um, the first picture, it appears that part of where the branch separated from the tree is bark and not rotted wood. The second picture, it appears that the red line or widened dreadline um, overshoots the side of the tree, so I consider that an exaggeration. And on the backside, where it gives the cross section of the tree, I believe that may be an exaggeration because it, yes, has the X-axis and yes, it has the Y-axis. It does not have the Z-axis. So how much of that? Is that a full three foot? Is it four foot? Is it two foot? Is it a slice? So the Z-axis is missing on that. Um, number six, I would like to verbally input the, um, press release of June third, twenty twenty-four, from the Davis Meeker Oak dot org website. I was at the court on Friday only. I was not anywhere near what happened Monday. I think that's, it's very well written. I think that should be added into the record. And lastly, number seven, I would like added into the record, the Save the Davis Meeker Gary Oak Group Leading Multi-Prong Effort to Save Historic Tomwater Tree, written by Jeffrey Westbrook of
Three minutes.
Thank you. I jolt.
Uh, Chris, uh, Kautowski. Do you have a Lori Weber?
Um, yes, I do. Hold on just a sec.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello. Hello. Um, yes, my name is Lori Weber. I am speaking from Surrey County, Virginia. I am, uh, was a resident of Olympia and Tomwater, grew up there and went to high school there and remember this tree and have, um, been so moved by the community's efforts to save this tree. I am a history teacher. I teach the history of America. I live right across the river from Jamestown, where our country was established. And I teach four hundred years of history and this tree embodies this. And I remember growing up in Washington and feeling that there wasn't much regard for history. That people didn't care that much about history in Washington. It was always about progress, new. Let's build something new. Let's develop something new. And really that is what America has become. I see it growing around me. I see it with, um, tearing down the old disregard for history, disregard for our environment. And in our area, it has to do with, um, the expansion of industrial solar farms. But in this instance, it's about a story of about a community. It's the story of the history of Washington. It's the story of people that came and settled there. It's the story of the Native American tribes. It's the story of the environment and the animals that have lived there. It is the story of Washington. And if we can't save this tree, I, I don't even know what is important with history. Why do we save anything? I just feel like it is crazy to me that one tree is, you are all so intent on, on destroying one tree, which this one tree embodies so much of the story of what you are of all of you. I look at you in Washington. I think this is the story of who you all are. So I would just ask that you stop, slow down, take some time. There is no rush on this tree. It stood for four hundred years. You can wait a few more weeks, months, and think about what's happening. And for this windstorm to happen and for the fact that this tree could stand so tall and strong during it, to me says volumes. Just, I would ask you all to exercise patience. Slow down in this process and just listen to your community and think about, this is, your story is embodied in this tree. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you to all those who have raised awareness on this problem. Thank you, Board, for listening.
Do you, do you have, see anyone else?
I do have somebody else that just registered for Debbie Bowes. Hold on.
Okay, go ahead. Are you there? Are they, they're not muted? Are they unmuted?
I've asked them to unmute.
Okay. We can come back and check later. Uh, now we'll go to in council chambers, Chris Kautowski. Kowski, come and state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Chris Kautowski, and I live at nine oh eight Delta Lane in Tomwater. I've lived in Tomwater since the nineties and raised three children here, and I'm going to talk fast, because I have a lot to say. I'm also an environmental planner and a member of the American Planning Association and AICP certified. And as such, the principles of my profession compel me to speak out against the decision by this mayor to exercise administrative authority and cut down the Davis Meeker Oak. This tree means a lot to me. Others here will remind you of its age, the meaning to our native peoples, and the part of the history of the Oregon Trail. They'll tell you of its beauty and how it's sheltering federally protected wildlife. But when I drive past that tree, the road makes a jog around it. And I see something else. I see how my government, this government, balances the needs of modern life with the desire to preserve our heritage, but the little jog tells me Tomwater is a good place to live. Have vision. It's our city government's responsibility to figure out how Tomwater will fill it into an economy where unique experiences are highly valued. This tree can be cherished for its place in our history and play a role in our future. We need time to find inspiration to identify and explore creative alternatives. Reduce risk. Our mayor tells us that this tree is not safe and that if it fails, then the consequences would be dire. I remind this body that life is risky business. We assume risks every day. Why is the only option the irrevocable death of this tree's life? What about pruning? How about moving the road? How about thinking about real solutions? Optics, hey, people, this looks bad. The appeal of our temporary restraining order, the rush toward demolition? There is talk in our community of hidden agendas, background politics and secret partnerships. This is, is this what you promised us when you campaigned for office? The press is here. This looks bad. Public engagement. After staffing many public meetings over the years, I am very aware that each person that attends a meeting or gives a comment is standing for hundreds who don't have the time, don't understand the process or feel their voices not matter. Council members, look at the people in this room. Listen as they share what they value. The simple truth is policy is made by those who show up and we are here. How many people usually attend a council meeting? You didn't even have enough chairs. How much interest is there in ongoing city business? How you handle this challenge will show exactly how the, this city values its public engagement. Instead of hiring lawyers, you need to hire a facilitator. Bring all the interested parties together, officials, city planners, scientists, arborists, tribes, wildlife, biologists, and work toward compromise. Take action. Only when you show proper permits are in hand and you have buy-in by stakeholders. It's not too late. The tree still stands. We need action by this council's leader in this room. Override the mayor's decision. Embrace public comment. Embrace, embrace public engagement. I'm sorry, I can't talk fast enough, but I'm going to submit this in writing so you can read exactly what I had to say.
Thank you. Uh, Tisha Smith?
Sasha Smith. I'm from Olympia. I work in Tomwater. I just want to thank everyone for coming out. I just want to get together and have a conversation with all of you guys. I think that you'd have a lot to say about our community. Um, you know, and a lot to just say about how you feel about the tree and about the kestrels, which is why I'm here. So thank you for listening to all of us. I, I do want to say that it makes me cry because I think about my kids. We love birds and they know about the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. I didn't, and I'm in my forties, I didn't, but they did. Um, and they do know that the whole thing started as a collaboration between America and Canada in protecting these birds that were coming back and forth. And it's just such a, a beautiful history there, that this working together. And so the kestrels are in the falcon family in the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. And they are protected. And it's not just from hunting. There's a whole list of things that they're protected from, really. It's just saying anything you could possibly do. I'm surprised they don't have something saying shoot it out of the tree with a rock as a kid. They're just protected. And I'm just asking you, give them time. If, let those birds grow, let them move. We're humans. We can keep talking, but please just don't cut it down so that those birds in that nest come down. I'm asking, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ray Gleason? Uh, you can just hand them to the clerk and she can pass them out. No, to down, hand them to the city administrator. Name and address for the record?
Ray Gleason. Six two two six Cedar Flats Road, Olympia. Um, talking about the Davis Meeker Oak, that it is a extremely rare remnant of the oak savanna that existed basically from all of Western Washington, all the way down into Western Oregon. Um, in each age class in Western Washington, there are less than twenty of them. And to think that we're considering removing that specimen without further assessment is, um, not being mindful of the, the uniqueness of that specimen. It's irreplaceable. That was living in a time when this was a, a grassland. Douglas fir trees only existed in that soil type. The Douglas fir would have only existed around the, the creeks in the rivers. When talking about the, the assessment that was done, um, the sonic tomography, you only see one image of the sonic tomography that was done at the base portion of the tree. Um, that need, and so on. Personally, I think that this, we need to be amicable. The, the city of Tomwater needs to be looked at, we need, between the public and the city, we need to be coming out of this looking positively. Um, I'm, as a scientist, I look at the sonic tomography as a great way of measuring the tree. Looking at it only at the base is inappropriate. That, that analysis needs to have been done multiple times and up throughout the entire canopy. Um, they would call it an, an aerial analysis. Um, that was not done. They, they used a rubber mallet and used sound, sounding technique. And by hitting the trunk of the tree and listening and trying to imagine how hollow it was, and it was completely based on interpretation. Inappropriate. Um, so, and then they drew this red line on the tree, imagining that they were correct. So that is inaccurate. And I, I would not use anybody that was trying to use that type of a health analysis on me. I'd go to a different doctor. And that we're using that lot of public funds to pay for that, inappropriate. And I'm, so an independent third-party analysis is, is needed at this time in order for the public to have an appreciation for the city of Tomwater. So that is where I would believe in, so. So let's ask for respect for the public's time and for future respect for the city of Tomwater. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Margaret O'Connor?
I, I think there was a question about the signup sheet.
Oh. I think, if, I'm sure there's other people who came in after signup sheet. I will double check and make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak, so. It, it, just because you didn't sign up does not mean you have not had the opportunity. So we will follow up.
So I'm, my name is Margaret O'Connor. I come from planet Earth. I'm here to talk about a middle-aged, four-hundred-year-old historic tree. For one thing, there's fundraising going on for a bunch of lawyers on both sides and taxpayer money. And I don't see why that isn't devoted to actually caring for this tree. Now, this, I read on the website, this Tomwater website, the city arborist has overseen the care of this tree for twenty-seven years. And according to you, the city, uh, I believe, then I would say he's failed. Um, yet you listen to him. Um, roads can be moved. In fact, this road needs to be moved anyway. Uh, this tree needs help. There are physical supports for large trees, trees involving corbels, cantilevers, guy wires, stations. There are these people called engineers and they know how to do that. Um, now, Mayor, I have read where you said that you don't want to have to face the family of someone who uh, who runs into a traffic accident with a branch coming down from this tree. Um, one answer to alleviate that situation, to, to relieve that from you is that you can step down and you will not be in control of the situation and not responsible. Lastly, even I know that this tree, the ground and the tree are on the cowlet's trail. It's a site of burials for both the native people and those who came after, a lot of travelers. And, um, this tree chose also to spall off a branch, which apparently is known as a hanging branch where a lot of Native Americans lost their lives. Um, I urge the city to leave this tree and the heritage and everything it stands for. And that we help this tree go forward another four hundred years and do something for the future generations and move the road.
Thank you. Um, Mark Fleming?
I'm Mark Fleming. I live in Olympia and I want, want to say, don't cut the tree down. If it's a risk, mitigate it, evaluate it and find ways to do it. As Ms. O'Connor just said, you have engineers, you have a great deal of expertise available. And taking the time to say thoroughly evaluate whatever risk a four-hundred-year-old tree presents is a good way to preserve our heritage and culture. And I strongly urge you to do so.
Thank you. Bev Bassett?
My name is Bev or Beverly Bassett, and I live at twelve eighteen Marion uh, street in Olympia. And I'm here to say that the deep irony- And I'm here to say that the deep irony of this whole evening was that we spent 45 minutes being informed about the Open Public Meetings Act. And that we have, you know, we, we have come so far from the 1970s when those laws were written by well intentioned people who didn't have hidden agendas and who really expected the government to act in the best interest of the citizens. But we've come, here we are. It's 2024 and our democracy is shot to hell. And we're, we're looking down the barrel of, of loss of what little democracy we have. And I have watched this city or this county, I've watched the, the Port of Olympia. I went to Port of Olympia meetings for four years. I hardly missed a one. I learned how corrupt they are. They are so deeply corrupt. It made me so sick. I had to stop going in 2017 because I was scared that the passion I felt towards these people who are acting in my worst interest.
Can you?
Let me calm down. I'm trying. That I was, you know, I don't, I don't believe for a moment that this tree is being cut down for safety. I know good and well that it's to expand the airport. And I know that you're just checking off the boxes and that you'll let all of us come and talk and you'll ignore us. Every word we say and cut that tree down on Thursday. And it won't make a bit of difference because our democracy is so gone. And the way you're acting, Mayor Sullivan, Sullivan, to, to get this tree cut down so you can expand the airport. Well, we're wise to you. We know what you're up to.
Thank you. Chad Kramer? Your pass, okay. Eric Jones Johansson?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity.
You can leave that up a little bit if you want.
My name's Eric Johansson, live in Tumwater, Tumwater Hill neighborhood. Brought this specifically because there's actually a couple of Gary oaks on city property. There's one off of 79th that I'm familiar with. And then there's the famous one that we're talking about tonight. The one off of 79th at the Old Trails End property. Apparently somebody loves that tree because that one is going to be protected. And not so much with the Davis Meeker Gary Oak. It seems a little bit odd to me. You guys were dealt a bad hand by DOT when they put the road in. They put it in too close to the tree. Move the road. That mitigates the risk. It's doable and you have to redo your road anyway. It's in the plan. Fence it off if you need to. This is fixable. This is totally fixable. And I would really like the city of Tumwater to put as much effort into protecting this tree as they put into protecting a brew house. The brew house is great, right? 100 years old. When that tree was growing, my ancestors were in Europe. That's been a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Cooper?
Good evening, council members. I'm Cindy Cooper. I'm a 13 year resident of Tumwater. I live on Tumwater Hill on Ebbets Drive. I'm also a 22 year veteran of the WSDA, the Washington State Department of Agriculture. I'm speaking in support of retaining the Gary Meeker Oak. And I urge you to reconsider your decision to take it down. You've heard a lot of good expert comments tonight. I'm not going to reiterate any of that, but just want to point out that this is one of only 14 native oaks on city property. You did a survey of the city trees and the folks that did that survey pointed out the importance of increasing the diversity of species upon city property. By removing this tree, you're not supporting that at all. And, you know, we have lots of great heritage projects in the city of Tumwater. For instance, the brew house. Lots of restoration going on for different projects. Why can this tree not be another opportunity for a great community project? To, you know, express the history and the love of our, our heritage around that tree. As a horticulturist, I also want to point out that I've heard two people comment that there were some seedlings and cuttings taken from this tree. So that when it is cut down, there would be seedling progeny. I don't believe that that's being handled well at all. I think the seedlings should be put in the hands of experts rather than the folks that they're supposedly taking care of those now. We have a wonderful oak propagator very close by that could handle these seedlings for us. That's Burnt Ridge Nursery in, on Alaska. He's an expert oak grower, one of the best in the country. So I'd urge you to handle those seedlings well, please. Also wanted to comment that at your May 14th meeting, there was a promise that there would be a survey handed out to the public for their collection of comments on what to do with the wood from this tree when it was cut down. And I want to know if you're going to provide that survey? Where we can find that survey? Is it going to be given to people before this tree is removed? I think that's rather important. So I'll, I'll cut it short just to say, please reconsider your decision. There are other options. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm trying to read the last name. So it's Sandy, Sandia Selsby? I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
That's okay. It's done all the time. My name is, sorry, my name is Sandia Slayby and I am a resident of Olympia. Live on Legion Street, Legion Way. I am left just incredibly baffled by this whole event in the last, let's say, couple of weeks. Hearing how that, how short a time some of the aspects have been happening and how long a time this has been moving forward without notice to either the public or the native tribes, et cetera. I want to be respectful of you all as a body and to, and individuals. That's a challenging thing for my, for me and my nature. I'm very angry and I could be really inappropriate. I should say I've, I struggle to be inappropriate. I struggle to be appropriate. But I am really baffled and what I'm left with is wondering, who is it you're listening to? I know we're supposed to speak to the whole body, but it's clear who you're not listening to. You're not listening to your city laws, your state laws or your federal laws. And we had a huge lesson this week that there is nobody that's above the law in this country. As a body, I hope that you will take all these statements, some of them being genuinely more respectful. I'm genuine, genuinely more respectful individuals than myself. But when authority figures do this kind of thing without total transparency, especially with the irony of the, the little tutorial we got about open meetings. And that's like bizarre. I can't, I came wondering what has happened in secrecy or over the years or whatever. I don't know, of course, but I'm left wondering. But I feel whenever I come to city council meetings about important things where decisions have been made and you all hold open meetings because you know you have to, I feel like we're groveling. And I don't want to feel like that. I want to feel like I'm being invited to engage and that you all are genuinely listening. It's hard to believe that, but I want to. So I hope you will listen. I hope you will reconsider. I hope you will give more time. Hope this tree is able to stay with us and we, and stay on earth longer than us. And I hope that you'll move the damn road.
Thank you.
Instead of the tree.
Katrina Simmons?
Good evening. My name is Katerina Simons. I'm currently an unincorporated county resident. But when I was growing up, my dad had a house on X Street and my former wicked stepmother still has a house on Henderson Boulevard that I make gestures to every time I drive by. I grew up here. This feels like home to me. We roamed a lot on, we had horses, we were at Trails End. Like this area is home. So while I lived in other places in the military, this is home. My military service let me live in Germany for four years and spent a year in Iraq. And those are places with a lot of history and we see a lot of architecture. And people go there to see the buildings that are 500 years old, 1,000 years old, 2,000 years old. They don't come to see natural beauty. That's what people come to America for because we tear everything down that is old. Living in Europe really taught me what a young country we are. And so I guess while maybe some members of the city council might see this as just a single tree, I feel like this is emblematic of America's tendency to tear down anything that is old and not value history and not see the breadth. This tree predates European colonization of this continent. It shares its history with our local tribal nations. It's seen wilderness and war and drought and industry. It's not dead. You can tell that there, it's living with the leaves. It has animals subject to the Migratory Bird Treaty Act living in it. There's, it's survived our winters. It's, it's lived through so much. It's on our historic register for a reason. And just like we lose our history by tearing down the buildings, we lose our history by tearing down things like this too. There are other options. I think the public would be a lot happier with an independent analysis and mitigation options. The way this has gone down has not fostered trust in the city council or your process or in some cases, your motivations. It's just really destroying the trust of the community at the same time as you're just wanting to destroy the history. The Gary Oak is the only oak that's native to our area. We need species diversity in, in this time. Our children are growing up and they need to have a livable earth.
Three minutes.
Just because a tree can't scream, it doesn't mean it's any less of a death if you cut it down. So if there are ways to preserve it, we really urge you to preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ariana Simons?
Hi, my name is Ariana Simons and I currently live in unincorporated Thurston County. I'm 11 years old. And even I know that that tree is very important to so many people. I really do believe that that tree can be saved and I want it to be saved. My friends and I many times have discussed that we want that tree there. We know that it's salvageable. We believe that it's truly alive. We don't think we should need to shout to be heard. You have said that you don't want to look in the eyes, sorry, I'm stuttering, of someone who has lost someone in a car accident because of that tree. I also believe that you could not look me in the eyes and say, I am going to disregard what you are saying and I am going to chop down a historical tree, a piece of living history. I need you to listen. I need you to respect everyone who is here and their wishes for this tree. This tree is important. It's living. And I do not believe, sorry. And I think that if you cut down this tree, I will never be able to trust you. And I don't believe. And I know that if I can't trust city council to make good decisions, I don't know what kind of decisions they'll make. I don't know if they'll make decisions that will hurt people. And that makes me feel incredibly unsafe. So I urge you to reconsider your decisions about this tree. I encourage you to save it. And I encourage you to listen to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand, but no clapping, please. Terry Graves? Do we have a Terry Graves here? Oh, okay, sorry.
My name's Terry Graves. I'm Cowletts Indian Tribe. That trail belongs to my grandfather. So first I want to acknowledge that you guys haven't done a land acknowledgement to honor the people of this land. All other cities, county governments do a land acknowledgement. Slap in the face, thanks very much. So welcome to my homelands. Welcome to Washington. We have trees, the wind goes, trees come down. Call 911, fire comes, cuts it, moves it out of the road. It happens. It happens. So if you're so concerned about this, move the road. So as my grandfather Roy would say, you are guests on our land. The Cowlet's Trail has been our highway of commerce since time immemorial. My great grandfather, the chief of chiefs, Chief Skenewa, controlled the trade routes from what is now Canada, all the way to the big waters of the Columbia River until his death in 1827. My grandfather, Skenewa, and the seven generations previous to him and the seven generations after him have traveled that Cowlet's Trail. Have passed that grandmother tree. Our people stopped for shade and rest as it was used as a marker tree within a large area of grasslands. This grandmother oak has guided many of my tribal relations. We touch her, we offer her prayers, we sang to her, we gift her. We thank her for her guidance. We believe everything has spirit. She is a beautiful living being. Who do you think you are to take such a life? Many burials have had a, we have planted trees to mark the burial site. My, my homestead on Fort Lewis has oak trees at the gravesite heads. I tend to look at the non-native relations here on the indigenous land. You drink the same water my ancestors drank. You eat the food off this land. You fish in our rivers. You carry some of the land and water and animal DNA of this land. And with that, you have a responsibility to this land, this water and this grandmother oak. And this is all for a buck? So have you heard of the Centennial Accord? You should probably educate yourself on it. I was hoping the Attorney General gentleman would like stay and educate you about it. I have contacted Ferguson to try to educate you about the accord. You have not consulted any of the tribes in this area. Um, so I'm going to say learn about it and abide by it. Move the road, protect my plant relations and the winged relations that are living within it. We're about to lose them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Greg Lamar Grove. I'm sorry if I messed up the middle name. I just couldn't read the writing, I'm sorry.
First time here. Thank you, councilpeople, mayor. Oh, sorry. Let me use my longhouse voice for you. From the mouth of your own babes, huh? Those are your children talking to you. I am a member of the Kowletts Indian Tribe. I come from the Luskean Katompian family. I, uh, I live down in Chehalis now. I was going to tell you I live in America. It's okay. And tell you that you don't seem to understand our history. So I'm going to try to help you out a little bit. That trail is Terry referred to. It's been there for a long, long time. It was our trail of commerce. It was our trail of trade. It still is. Eight years ago, three of us men, and I'm an older guy now, but it was kind of tough, but we walked that trail. We took five days from the Kowletts River. Slept by the road, my brother Randy Cottonware. I went home. He slept by the road. Point is, is we touched all of those places that we were told about by our elders. And now I'm an older man. We stopped by that tree and we remembered. We remembered that it's a marker for us. It points a direction. Archaeology and anthropology issues need to be addressed. You as a council, I believe, are supposed to be in consultation with the tribes that that tree has an effect upon. Talking to you about the trade routes. Five of our tribes here in this area always traded and always married. That would be the Kowletts, the Chehalis, Squaxin, Niskwale and P'wala. All five of those tribes have an interest in that trail. We took our horses when we had them. We drug our dugouts up to the falls. We were there with our relations of Skwale. We fished. Many of you probably don't even know that there's an old camp right there where the creek comes down. It's our, it's our history. It's who we are. It's how we identify ourselves upon the land, different than the modern society. But just because we live in a modern society, doesn't mean that we don't remember that stuff. I would hate to be in the middle of a lawsuit with the city of Tumwater because you know federally recognized tribes have standing. And you also have to know that individual federally recognized Indians have standing. I have standing in court to address you. You really need to do the consultation part. That tree, that tree is way past important. Thank you for the three minutes.
Thank you.
I've got a lot more to say, but maybe another.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I can't, I'm having trouble reading this name. Is it Derek Langes, Langeskiya? I, I'm sorry, I can't read it very well. It's, it's at 1396 89th Street, 89th Avenue? Okay. Sorry, I could not read the writing. I apologize. Can you just move towards the microphone, please?
I have to use my command voice.
I, I know, but we can't hear the recording.
Honorable mayor, council members and honorable citizen. There's so much I could say. I'm kind of like a village idiot. I'm a retired lieutenant colonel and I have the highest honor that the guard had offered. But that doesn't make me a bit better than any of you. And so bear with some of the ugliness I have to say. Regarding trust in the Tumwater City Council, this is not directed at any of you individually, but that the, the concept at the council, as it has happened. I have, at risk of alienating anyone, I'll first state two situations that impacted me regarding the faith and the concept of our city council. Like I say, not, not directed at any of you individually. On one occasion that I needed assistance from the Tumwater Police in a domestic situation, I was required to call at least three times before they responded. And when they did, one of the officers threatened me with being shot for attempting to get a pack of cigarettes out of my pocket. On another occasion involving the Tumwater City Council, they levied a fine of $10,000 to a family next door for having a rooster with their flock of hens. Only reason I mention this is to show that at some time this council didn't use very much common sense. And now I don't know that they can grasp the concept of sacred and evaluate what previous people have spoken of. Sacred is a non-tangible concept that can't be touched physically. But it is a phenomenon that we all readily perceive, including this council. That tree is sacred. treated as such. You will gain face by saving that tree. You will lose face by cutting it down and you will gain face by changing your decision to cut that tree down. And face is the most important thing that you all can hold on to. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Sharon Natra? I'm sorry, I cannot read the last name. Sharon? It might be, yes. On Tilly Road? Yep.
Thank you, Sharon Koontz, Outland County, in Tilly Road. As public opinion grows against the mayor's continued refusal to change her arbitrary decision to kill the oak tree as soon as possible, I can't help but wonder how she could be so set on this course as to not just say quite logically, okay, I'll give you other arborists a chance to prove you can make the tree safe. Let's pause and have you prune and brace the tree. If you can make it safe, even just for now, we can at least avoid killing the birds and breaking the law and, and save some birds nesting in the tree and then we can revisit this. It's especially odd that there's no compromise offer at all from the mayor when she must realize that a recall campaign is obviously coming very soon if she goes ahead with this plan. There truly is no logical reason for holding on to such an unpopular position and refusing to even consider the offered and easy solutions. The panic over public safety, I'm sorry. No offense meant, but it doesn't seem entirely genuine because if it were, we'd have heard about the danger soon after the branch fell, not months, many months later. So it leaves many of us wondering what's behind this attempt to break, to break a long-held pledge, often affirmed in many official Tumwater documents, a pledge that the tree will be protected. That pledge is even stated in the current Tumwater Highway Corridor Study about widening the road. So that's one behind the scenes story and I guess possible motive that maybe we're just not hearing much about. The other involves the Port of Tacoma. I mean, sorry, Port of Olympia where Lisa Parks used to work and their plan, which will at least be partially revealed this summer to enlarge the airport. The tree would have to go for that purpose, for that to happen. And if it does, frankly, I wouldn't be too surprised if our other historic impediment to airport enlargement. When you read their documents, you'll see the adjacent Washington State Patrol hangar, which is historic also. But it would be found suddenly to be a safety hazard or something, I suspect. And if this sounds wildly conspiratorial, and it might to some of you, there are documents with facts that make it all quite plausible, plausible. So let's have some common sense here. Stop the killing of the tree and the birds for now. And remember, the birds being there makes the killing illegal. So there's no losing face by pushing the pause button. Tumwater has nothing to do, to lose rather, by doing so. Unless you were party to some sort of secret part, some sort of secret plan or agreement. And I hope you're not. It does sound plausible to me, however. If not, let's get busy letting the experts try to make this historic iconic tree safe. This sacred tree, as many have pointed out, perhaps to live another hundred years at least. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Cruans? Cruelno? Okay. Astrid Strum?
Just going to be really quick, as everybody said, everything that has been said. It's a beautiful tree. I live at Scott Lake. I drive by that tree every day. I'm not from here. I'm from the desert. I'm from New Mexico. And I know what these trees mean to these people. When you see these trees in the desert for the natives, they need these trees. These trees mean everything to the people that came before us. They mean, these trees mean everything to us. When we drive by them, we can move the road. A road is easy to move. A tree that falls that everybody wants to see up. Everybody's here for this tree. This one little tree. I don't know what else to say that everybody else hasn't already said, except that this community wants this tree here. And they were willing to drive around the road. They are willing to put up with road traffic to, if you have to move the road to save the tree. Trees are going to fall. They all fall. I live in a forest. My trees fall all the time. But let the tree fall on its own. I don't think the assessment's been done a lot, done, done well enough. I don't understand why it has to be tomorrow. Why can't there be further evaluations on this tree? It fell, a limb fell October 23rd, 2023 and less than six months, we're going to cut it down? Why can't we just evaluate just a little bit longer? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Stacaro?
Thank you. Sue Sakura Olympia, Harrison Ave. And what a beautiful community turnout. I just wanted to thank everybody, including the council, once again, for making space for this. Thank you for hearing us. And I, I know we can't make noise, but I think we can go like this. So how many people are here for the tree tonight? Thank you. I reside in Olympia, but I work in Tumwater, passing this tree six times a week. And each time I say hello, beautiful. I honor your grandeur. This is a difficult issue and I respect that. I have compassion for each of you council members, each of you. I see that you're trying and doing your best to navigate a unique and unprecedented situation for Tumwater. I heard you say in the last council meeting that you've never dealt with this before. It's a first and it's hard. And I appreciate that. Thank you for taking the extra time for this discussion and this issue. When I ask, when did this problem start? You know, one of the rules of problem solving is identify the problem. When did it start? I have limited knowledge compared to you all, but in, from my view, it started when there were no guidelines, as you all have said before, unprecedented. You didn't have any rules to follow. And when there were no guidelines, we kind of went sideways. When it comes to know, to how to make decisions for this special tree, we need special guidelines. It's not just any tree. As you know, it's a sacred tree. This tree is one of a kind, a first for Tumwater, both a tree and a historic landmark. That's incredible. I'm sorry there weren't better guidelines for you in dealing with this. It's not too late to create those guidelines for not only this situation, but also so it's clear for next time it may occur. Other cities have done this same thing with similar trees. So you would not have to start from scratch. You don't have to invent the wheel. Just look to the other cities in our, even in our state. We can just copy them. I continue to have faith in your leadership to guide us, all of you, to guide us through this together, to find a way to save this tree and provide public safety. This tree is a special tree. It needs special experts on heritage tree preservation. The only company with this expertise is Tree Solutions. The company name is Tree Solutions.
Thank you.
Red flag, one last sentence. Will you give them a chance? Give Tree Solutions a chance to help us create a path forward. Thank you.
Jeff Foster?
My name is Jeff Foster. I live at 3104 59th Port Southeast in Olympia. And until I retired a few years ago, I was an ecologist working in the forestry program at Joint Base Lewis McCord. Over the course of 24 years, I had the opportunity to observe and to measure thousands of oaks. Because I think we have more barkis garyana on the joint base than anywhere else in Washington. And we have some really big and impressive trees there. But I attended the rally at the Davis Nikero. I think it was a couple of weekends ago. And the more time I, I spent observing and walking around it, the more impressed I was. It has a larger diameter. It's taller and probably older than any oak I ever saw on the joint base. And it certainly had a lot of history. As an ecologist, I'm used to trying to decipher what's happened over the lifetime of a tree. I had a couple of regrets while I was there. One was knowing that the tree might be cut down soon. And the other was that there it was between an airport hangar and a paved road. Whereas originally it was growing out in Native Prairie next to an historic trail. And I've spent a lot of time in Native Prairies and trying to preserve them too, both on and off the base. So the context for the tree has been lost, but we can still remember that. This is a unique tree. There's just nothing like it anywhere around here. And I don't think you want to make a hasty decision on this. Take your time, do it right. By the way, I talked to an arborist there at the rally. And he said that he and some other arborists felt that there'd been an overestimation of the amount of decay in the tree. And the branch that had fallen last October, he had cut out a cross section from it, just close to where it attached to the main trunk. And it was there, the rally showed it to me. There was no rod in that cross section. And I just tried to do a rough count of the annual growth rings on it. The branch alone, 150 years old approximately. So thanks for this opportunity to have this input.
Thank you. Deborah Jaquah? Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Deborah Jaquah and I live in in unincorporated Thurston County. I'm, I echo all the statements that have been made to save this oak tree. And I really, I really hope that each and every one of you, listen. Listen to what people are, are expressing about this tree. It's important and we're just, we're just a drop in the bucket. And we're just, we're just a drop in the bucket of the people that really care about this tree. Someone said that it's sacred. It is. Please keep that in mind. Save the tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Stewart?
Hi, Sarah Stewart. I live in Tonino. And anytime I need milk, I drive past the tree. I'm going to try to stay organized since I have not very much time. I want to first speak to everybody, the entire council, all of the behind the scenes people, and everybody here, and everybody who has shown support over the last months, really. But recently, you know, it's really incredible. I'm sorry. Where are my emotions on my sleeve? But I really, it is very ironic, the training that took place that we all got to endure. I, 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 I am glad for that. But in light of that, I think I need to say that, you know, everybody is here to be heard and to communicate with all of you how not only we feel, mostly how we feel though, but just the amount of knowledge that I have gained over the last two weeks from the incredible people that are involved in this effort. It's really a remarkable group of people. And if you guys could spend time listening, I really think that that would grow a lot of mutual respect from everybody. Okay, I'm going to seriously try to stop crying. Last Friday, we had a gentleman that Pamela brought out to hold signs. We were holding signs. And he made one that said, save the tree, honk. And I wish I had taken video, because about eight out of every 10 cars waved and honked. So just as someone pointed out, you know, that each one of us, you know, we really do represent the community as a whole. And so I think you need to, I need to speak faster. I want to read something that I found online, AOL.com. I'm quoting here. "Various Native American tribes understood the hawk as a messenger bringing insight, discernment, and focus into our lives. Across ancestral traditions, the hawk represented clear vision, intuition, and the ability, excuse me, to swiftly rise above any challenges or obstacles in our way." Thought that would be nice to share. I recently went on a road trip across the country to Florida and back, and I got to see our beautiful country. But the thing that impressed me the most was coming home to Washington and seeing our big, beautiful trees. There's nothing like them. So let's save them, especially the ones that are so significant. Thank you.
Thank you. Arthur Worth? And I probably did not say that name correctly.
Hello. My name is Art Worth. I'm a, my residence, Tumwater Residence is 2409 SAP Road. I've been a Tumwater area resident since 1951 and firmly the business manager of Timberland Regional Library behind you and retired as the finance director of Ocean Shores. I'm speaking in opposition to the decision to cut down Tumwater's historic oak tree. And I want to talk about a statistic, so no clapping yet. It has to do with the risk statistic. The mayor's quoted a study showing that there were 407 deaths from wind-related tree failures in the United States, and that's been one of the justifications for cutting down the tree. So that's from a study from Kent State University, which is authoritative and reliable, but it has almost nothing to do with the Davis Meker Gary Oak tree. And I'm going to parse it for you. So I'll wake you up in two minutes. There are 407 deaths from, in the study, but the study covered 13 years. So there's actually 31 tree-related deaths in the United States per year. Two-thirds of them are associated with thunderstorms, hurricanes, and tornadoes, none of which are events that we rarely experience in Tumwater. And half of them don't have anything to do with vehicles. So when you parse out the category, per the study, there's only six tree-related deaths per year relating vehicles in this category. Now, this category is covered the Pacific Northwest and the Mid-Atlantic. So if you split it 50/50, that means that there would be three deaths per year in the, in our area. But it's actually in the report, if somebody's actually read it, there's been two, there are two, average of two tree-related fatalities in the state of Washington per year from, from, from this situation. And, and, and that included all categories of causes and locations. So if you take out the non-vehicle ones, there's one tree-related vehicle, death-related from a vehicle per year. And the, and the study includes trees that fell down in the road hours earlier, and people drove into them. So there might be, so there's from between one and zero trees per year that have fallen on people's heads. And that's to compare, I want to compare that with the 407 deaths that the, that's being used to justify it. And I want to put this into a complete perspective. According to the recent University of Utah study, the number of people killed in the U.S. annually in deer vehicle accidents is 440. In other words, you're over 70 times more likely to be killed by Bambi than you are to be killed by, by an old oak tree. So I don't want to discount the potential public safety issue, but there are solutions, there are documented for protecting the tree and the public safety, and I ask you to consider those. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Nicandry?
I'm sorry I have to follow that. Dave Nicandry, 505 Fourth Avenue Southwest. I was on the city council in the 1970s, and I was a member of the Historic Preservation Committee that had this issue under study. And I'm the former director of the Washington State Historical Society. And I was introduced to Tumwater history in 1972 by Jim Brown, who took me to meet a fellow by the name of Albert Rutledge, who, we were trying to save the cemetery over on Little Rock Road. And Mr. Rutledge, who was 90 at the time, again, this is 1972, kept referring to his Uncle Jesse, who upon further inquiry was identified as Jesse Ferguson, who was one of the original American settler pioneers who came here in 1845. So my ancestry in connection might not go back as deep as some. But I'm standing here today as a person who spoke to a person, who spoke to a person, who were the first American colonists on Puget Sound. And for this tree to be, for this tree to be ripped down, it's just simply an absolute travesty. And then let me speak to the root of this problem. No pun intended. I have a JD, but it's an honorary. But I, I've seen enough law and order procedurals. And I know the consequence of fruit from the poison tree. Mr. Althausser can give you a more detailed analysis of this. We saw the original report. It was, it was flawed. A group of historians with no botanical expertise determined that the forms that informed his judgment that the tree should be cut down was wrong, mistaken. We pointed that out. He refused to engage in peer dialogue. He would come to a meeting, but he wouldn't answer any questions of other botanists. Now, isn't it interesting that I've seen reference to two or three dozen botanists over the course of the last three months? And there's only one botanist on record who's in favor of cutting the tree down. Every other botanist that's on the record says, we're missing something here. So I would just end with this. I've had four books published in the last 10 years, 14 years, all of them peer reviewed. Peer review is not a comfortable thing to go through if you're a professional in any discipline. You have to lay your reputation on the line. You have to defend your thesis. And the consultant upon which every one of these decisions is being based refused to engage in peer review. And I don't know how in good conscience you can proceed on a decision when every other arborist who's offered an opinion offers a contrary point of view, and the one upon which you're basing your decision refused to engage in peer review dialogue. So fruit of the poison tree, that pun is intended.
All right, those are all the ones that I have on the list. Do I have any others that signed up online?
I do. I have four more online.
And then I will get to those who missed in council chambers, okay?
Okay, so the first is going to be Christina Manetti, who had the poor connection before.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Thank you so much for coming back to me. I'm sorry about that. I don't know exactly what, what was the matter. This is Christina Manetti from the Gary Oak Coalition. It's an environmental nonprofit in Lakewood. I'm here to urge you to preserve the Davis Meker Gary Oak as both a historical landmark, I'm a historian, and a, and a critical area. From what we've observed, the city of Tumwater seems to be ignorant of some fundamental facts. As a result, the city is acting in violation of the law and without regard to the intention of WDFW guidelines that are supposed to inform the city's policymaking. It was shocking to hear the city's representative at the proceedings last week say that the migratory bird act only relates to the hunting of birds. And even more unbelievable to witness that the judge accepted this falsehood unquestioningly. Yes, the Trump administration changed the law to weaken the productions, but, but Biden administration restored them. So if the city of Tumwater cuts down the tree, it will be breaking the law while nesting castles are using it. The WDFW habitat biologist Darren Masters confirmed that it is illegal to cut it down, as well as WDFW's Jennifer Ermiston. The city of Tumwater also appears to be ignorant of WDFW's management recommendations for Gary Oaks, which are also called Oregon White Oaks. That's the term that's used in those publications, that were published in 1998 and in January this year. These are supposed to inform the city's policies regarding Gary Oaks, and there is no sign in the Tumwater Municipal Code that the city has based their policy decisions and regulations on these recommendations. I, I couldn't find the word Gary Oak or Oregon White Oak in the municipal code. I just couldn't. Because Tumwater has not based its municipal code on these recommendations, the city has failed to identify Gary Oaks as critical areas, even single Gary Oaks that are valuable to wildlife, as this one is, qualify. And they should be. See the 1998 recommendations. Because Tumwater has failed to include the Gary Oaks as critical areas, the city therefore allows these critical areas to be destroyed without any talk of mitigation. For example, in the 2024 recommendations, you see that just for, for just one Gary Oak of 30-inch diameter breast height, 250 young Gary Oaks would be required as mitigation. But you see that the, the impacts are to be avoided in the instance, in that publication, to be avoided. In the 1998 recommendations, it clearly says that Gary Oaks on the west side of the Cascades should not be cut down except for stand enhancement. Mitigation for large oaks is impossible. There would be a temporal gap in the habitat of hundreds of years while the small ones grow. And we don't even know whether, in the new climatic conditions, they will become large. As a result, Tumwater will be allowing a net loss of critical areas, which is in violation of the Growth Management Act, which requires that there be no net loss. The city is also ignorant of basic ecological principles that must be considered when making decisions about this and other oaks. The city looks at the oak as something that is dangerous, because it might kill a human being, because it loses a branch. It is actually more, more valuable because it has rot. And you can see this in the 2024 recommendations. You must guide your policies according to what is best for this oak and the ecosystem, not only what is expedient for humans. Stop thinking only about humans. It is because of people like you and nightmarish decisions like this one that we are facing the environmental crisis we are in today. But you can help fix it, protect this Gary Oak. Thank you very much. I appreciate coming back to me.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
Yes, we have three more. We have a James Dunlop.
James Dunlop, can you please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is James Dunlop, and I am a resident of Lakewood. I just wanted to make a couple of points about city councils and my observations. I think that many people regard that the city, that their city councillors as being there to represent their interests. And I think that they put a lot of faith in their city councillors to look after their interests. And having looked at how city councils certainly operate in Lakewood and Tacoma, I, I do think that there is a problem. And I think that, you know, city councillors do have to be aware as they go into the job of the kind of pressures that they're put under, that they are, there is an incredible pressure to conform. And I think that, you know, a social psychologist like Irving Janis, when he wrote that book, Group Think, he was talking about the Bay of Pigs, talking about the Kennedy Cabinet making this disastrous decision to invade Cuba. You know, those are really highly intelligent, articulate people. And even they were, were pressurized in, in, to making a disastrous decision. I think this is a disastrous decision like you are about to make, I think. But the pressure is quite enormous. There's also a second pressure that if you have made a decision, that you really want something done, it's human nature to want to dig your, dig your heels in and to sort of accept that, you know, I don't, I don't want to back down. It's human nature not to want back down. We all have strong egos. But sometimes it is the right thing to do. And so I think city councillors do need to be aware of the pressure. You know, you are there. Sorry, I can't address you, but city councillors are there to look after the interests of, of, of those they're representing. In this particular instance, they're, they're there to look after the residents of Tumwater. And you need to be aware of that. And you're not there to look after the interests, for example, of city bureaucrats, who have their own ideas about development. And they kind of see you as ways to rubber stamp what they want to do. And so I think you need to sort of take a step back from where you are and the pressures that you're under, and to just look at what is actually going on. Because if that tree comes down, which is, after all, it's illegal for it to come down, not, I mean, it's not only illegal, it's immoral. And if that comes down, you will be blamed forever, because that tree cannot be put back up again. It takes hundreds of years for an oak to grow. So I think you need to, I, I think city councillors need to think very carefully about it. And it's a time, I think, for a bit of bravery.
Thank you.
Now I have a Mariana Dane, and I don't have her under my list by name, but I'm going to let two phone numbers speak.
Okay. Go ahead. No one there?
So now we can go to the last one that registered online, which was a Kyle Nichols, Nicholas.
Go ahead. Are they, are they muted?
I've asked, I've asked them to unmute, and they can talk.
Okay. We will go ahead and move on. Yeah, and we will go in chambers now. So it, those are the individuals who've signed up. And I am seeing a lot of people who have not spoken. So I'm assuming that there'll be more people who would like to speak. So if you could come to the podium, and I will, one, one at a time, please. One at a time. But if you don't mind, can I have someone take this and have, that since there are so many, can I have someone have those other individuals sign up, please? And then I'll go ahead and have them sign up. So whoever the first person is on the list, can you come up and state your name, and then that way we can get things moving? Name and address.
I'm Janine L., and I have a home on Tumwater Hill on Fourth Avenue. There's not
There's not much I can add here that hasn't been so beautifully stated already. Bev, you definitely stole the thunder on the irony of the open public meetings tonight, and that focus on transparency, which is the first thing I really want to say. That the transparency in this process on many multiple levels has been very poor, and especially when it comes to why this tree even needs to come down at all. We know it's not safety, because it was a year ago that the branch fell. From the records I've seen, there's conflict there on that date. But that branch fell a year ago, and yet we're here today dealing with it for the first time. So there's no emergency when it comes to the danger that this tree represents to the public. There does seem to be a hidden agenda here at some point that we're all discovering. We don't know what it is, and even members of your own city council don't seem to understand why the urgency of this tree, or even the fact that it needs to come down at all, is happening. But here's where we are in this moment. We've got a pair of nesting kestrels that are in the cavity of the tree with assumably some babies involved. And we've contacted the U.S. Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the Portland Office of the Migratory Bird Treaty Act that enforces permitting and law enforcement of that act. And the message is very clear. If anyone touches or disturbs that tree with those birds nesting in it is simply not allowed. That's the law. And that's the law that you'll have to follow in this. We've been told by official Tomwater staff and officers that the mayor claimed that she consulted the tribes in this issue. Yet our consultation with the tribes, the Kowals, the Nisqually, and the Squaxin, would tell us that that's not true. This consultation did not take place. We have been I've been involved with this process for nearly four months now, from February, when this first kind of started, you know, the process of this started. And the process around this beloved, historic, protected, and very alive and healthy meeker oak is totally lacking in transparency and truth telling.
Three minutes, thank you.
All right, thank you. This has been a faithless and difficult process, and I'm asking the city council to act, and I'm asking the mayor to get into truth and to give this tree its due, which is to protect it
Three minutes.
and to preserve it for future generations.
All right. I just have a lot of initials here. Janie L., can you come and oh, sorry. All right. Kepler F. And can you state your full name for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Kepler Felton, and I live in West Seattle. And I was just learning about this tree recently, and I wanted to say that every time I learn more about what's happening with this tree, I am more and more disappointed with what people are doing about it and how this is coming along. And I will say that most people in the audience here are to support this tree and it not being cut down. And if, after all of these people pouring their hearts out and saying, "Don't cut this tree down," you still ignore them and cut it down for reasons that you think are important, but the community says no. These are the people you think you're affecting. They say no. They say, "Don't cut it down." Please don't, because that tree, in not just this story, but throughout many generations before, is part of the community, not just part of the landscape or part of what exists. It's part of the community. And if you chop it down, you're chopping down part of the community and part of all of us. So even after all this, if you decide to cut it down, then, in my opinion, you deserve all the hatred that comes back at you, all of the absolute wrath towards you, the malice that people will say when they think of you. You kind of deserve that because you didn't think it through. And people will just be so angry at you, and for even when you're dead, in the history books, they will say, "This person was a joke to everyone." And that's about it. That's all people will think of you. Don't be that person. Thank you.
Thank you. No, excuse me, no clapping. Thank you. Diana Kylie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we have heard people speak on the, from the experts, on the condition of the tree. We've heard emotional requests. I'm going to go a different direction. And first, I'm going to make an observation that the sense of dismissiveness and apathy that I'm sensing from this governing body is really hurtful. So where I'm going to start with my three minutes or two minutes and 25 seconds, is I'd like you all to draw attention to that first picture. They wouldn't be here if it were not for the Kowals people and our river, the Kowals River. You didn't get here except through us. That history must be preserved, and we've got the historian that can back me up on this. My ancestors toiled, carrying their belongings by canoe, building wagons, then to transport them over land, to bring them to this very place. What kind of gratitude are you going to give them? You wouldn't be here if you had not come through Kowals country with Kowals labor, Kowals help, Kowals transportation. I really, really need you to understand that it's more than the tree. It is, the decision to save a tree is one matter, but a decision to preserve history and to treat us, the Kowals people, the Nisqually people, the Pualup, Squaxin, remember us. We live with you. You got here only through us. So give us back this little piece of our land. Preserve it, memorialize it, and honor it. Build your airport. Go ahead. But leave that piece. You can build around it, move the road, move the airport. I watched from an aerial view. You have plenty of space to expand without taking out our history again. The apathy I'm sensing here has to be the apathy that I felt or my ancestors felt at the Treaty of Medicine Creek. The Kowals refused to sign that Medicine Creek treaty because we wanted our lands intact, not to be put somewhere else on the road, put aside and disregarded. And that's what's happening here now. So I'm going to ask this council, please, take a vote tonight to postpone this until our people have a chance to weigh in. You've denied us that. You know from my previous statement that both the Nisqually and the Kowals just went through new elections. We have no leadership to make a decision. Give them time to talk to you and weigh in. As my brother said, we have standing. Honor that standing. I see, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Barnaby C.
Hi, I'm Barnaby. I live in Olympia.
Could you state your last name, please?
Caldwell. And I am just coming up really quick to say that I'm representing. I really resonate with what people were saying before about how everyone here is representing people who are too tired or too busy to be here. And I'm representing younger adult voters, I guess, and that's an important part. We're voters, and we pay attention to this sort of thing. We care about trees, and we care a lot about local elections. We, some of us care more about local elections than bigger elections that may be coming up. We take a lot of stock and care about what's happening around here. So I just wanted to remind people of that. There's stuff on the line. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm having difficulty reading this name.
And move the fence.
Yeah.
Sorry, I wrote really fast. Thank you, everybody, for all your comments. I'm just going to provide some quick facts. Tanya N'Zala, I live in Tomwater. P.O. Box 14013. I've served on the tree board for seven years. And the reason why is because when I moved here 20 years ago, I love this little town, and I wanted to protect the trees that were here. My husband will make fun of me all the time because we have a very small piece of property, and I try to put as many trees in as I can. But I wanted to, I wanted, oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to just provide some quick facts. I am very emotional about the tree. I've met people in the last two weeks that are in this room that are very passionate as I. But the branch that fell from the meeker oak fell in February of 2023. I met the gentleman who witnessed it. I met the person who saw it. It fell next to a tree, not in the road. The gentleman whose daughter was going to work, it fell in front of her car. He still thinks the meeker oak should not be cut down. The falcons, I saw them last Thursday. I heard, okay, I was there Saturday. I went there Thursday, and I actually saw them. One of them is white. She's beautiful. I saw her chase away a hawk about four times her size. And I heard the babies in the cavity of the tree. I talked to, I've been calling since the hearing on Friday. I've been calling U.S. Fish Wildlife. I finally got ahold of a gal today. She is the one that wants to go out and do an assessment on Thursday. Hopefully, the Gary Oak will still be there. I sent her the pictures I took. I did not have my real camera, but it was a very good picture of them. So she's going to go there and do an assessment. She's already going to be at the airport doing an assessment of Oregon swallows. I have sent, a lot of people are saying move the road, and that's a very good option, but I also talked to an individual who does work for Mercer Island, and a wildlife bridge is another idea. They are real, I looked him up, they're amazing. And it's just a, I-90 has one, works very well. Can just, and can protect the road and the public if that is your concern, and the tree can still stay. Bellingham, another thing I wanted to mention is serving on the tree board, Bellingham has just created a city council ordinance to protect their historical and heritage trees, and it is very strict, and I will be bringing that forward to the tree board to implement that in our town because it will prevent things like this happening in the future.
Three minutes, thank you.
And there was one more thing. We are nationwide. The wildlife agent that called me today, we are in People Magazine. Our little town in this story. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, I appreciate everyone coming.
I do have one more person that tried to speak earlier, and the Mariana Dane. I'm going to still try to unmute the three phone numbers and see if she can speak.
Okay, go ahead.
So it's for Mariana Dane.
Are you there? So it doesn't sound like this is going to work. So I also encourage those who are not able to connect for whatever technical reasons to go ahead and submit their comments, so. All right. With that, public comment portion is ended. Thank you very much, everyone, for attending tonight. It is definitely a lot of people to hear, and so I appreciate it. There is nothing on our agenda to be taking a vote on. We will be discussing something that was added to the agenda, but I do not believe that that will be a vote this evening. We will discuss that after that. You're perfectly welcome to stay for that. So with that, I'm going to be asking for approval of the consent agenda or consent calendar. What's that?
So moved.
Do I have a second for the consent calendar?
I'll second.
Second, okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Dahlhoff, seconded by Councilmember Von Holtz. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose nay. With that, we have approved the minutes of the city council meeting of May 14th, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of May 21st, payment vouchers, resolution number 2024-003, surpassing K-9 James, which is a very sad event, but he will be going home with his great handler. Local agreement, interlocal agreement with the city of Olympia for the Mottman pedestrian and the street improvement project. Israel Road, excuse me, can we have quiet in the chambers, please? Israel Road and Linderson Way Pedestrian and Bike Improvement Project Authority to Solicit Bids and Recommend Award. Construction contract with Active Contracts Construction, Inc. for the Interstate 5, Trosper Road, Capitol Boulevard, Reef Configuration Project, request for additional construction funding, reappointment of Joe Monroe and Amy Hargrove for the Board of Parks and Recreation Commission, Thunder in the Valley, Fourth of July fireworks display permit, and cancellation of the June 18th regular city council meeting. All right, with that, we are now going to go to council considerations, and the first is Resolution R. 2024-011, which is the strategic priorities and goals 2025 and 2026.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the culmination of the review that the council embarked upon beginning in January of this year. We met at a retreat session in January. We continued that conversation specifically around the strategic goals and priorities for the community in February, and then wrapped that up in March. The resolution that you have before you is intended to adopt the strategic goals and priorities for 2025, 2026. These are, as we have reviewed at those different meetings, as well as we incorporated comments from council members who provided those subsequent to the March retreat session. So we are hopeful that you will find these to be satisfactory. These are guiding the development of our biennial budget process and provide us as staff the direction that we request from you all in terms of measuring and identifying our priorities for moving forward with our tasks and providing services and infrastructure to the people of Tomwater. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I know in the past when we've had multiple versions of a document that the track changes were included, so I can't remember last week, let alone the edits that I made. So I'm wondering how I could see what edits were incorporated, because I don't see track changes.
Sure, I have a version of track changes. Sure, I have a version of track changes that I could send to you if you'd like. Um, they were pretty minimal. We tried to address each of the concerns, but, so Councilmember Dahlhoff, you are the only council member who submitted uh comments to us.
That's not a bad thing.
No, it's not a bad thing, not at all. Uh, only intending to say that um we actually incorporated the majority of your comments in terms of updated language to try and provide clarity. You'd ask some questions about.
I guess before I'll vote, yes, I'd like to see which ones were not incorporated. So I'm a no right now until I could see what ones you didn't incorporate.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, I should bring this up. I believe this one takes action. Sorry, I have too many things open. So do I have anyone who's willing to make a motion? Councilmember Althouser.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. I, to, to just provide a teeny bit of context and also speak to the resolution of strategic goals and priorities. When we have these retreats, I think it's such a great thing that we actually take the time to sit down to talk about what our future goals are for the city. Um, that took place over a three-day process to try to actually articulate those things. We looked at our past goals, we built upon those, we checked a few boxes, which always feels good when we can cross stuff off because we've achieved some of the finite goals. But I think that overall, looking at the document, you know, this represents certainly my vision that we try to achieve for, for achieving everything we have in our acronym people. Um, I'm really proud of the document that's before us and I'm really pleased to offer to make a motion that we adopt resolution R two zero two four dash zero one one, updating the city's strategic priorities.
Do I hear her second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Discussion on the motion? No discussion on the motion. I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Nay?
Well, you didn't.
Okay, sorry, okay.
No, yes.
All right, so just one opposed. All right, the motion carries. Thank you very much, and we will get you the comments.
Appreciate it.
Next is a letter of understanding with the Squawson Island Tribe. Um, and I have Chief Wicks here.
Thank you, Mayor. I, Council, I'm back again. Uh, before you tonight is the updated letter of understanding with the Squawson Island Tribe uh for law enforcement services. If you recall, in two thousand twenty-three, we signed an initial letter of understanding uh that was signed with the Squawson Island Tribe, which provided Tom Water Police Officers the authority to enforce traffic and criminal laws of the state of Washington uh for specific, for specific property owned by the tribe located within the city. Since this time, um, I should say it also uh implemented a provision of a two thousand twenty-three uh M O U that the city signed with the tribe. Um, since that time, the tribe has now purchased additional land uh that they are currently developing. Uh, and that's why we're bringing it to you in front, directly to the council on consideration. Uh, that land has gone into trust land now, uh, and we need to clarify uh our legal authority to be on that land uh to enforce those laws. So what you have before you is a current letter of understanding and it's also looking forward into the future. Instead of being very specific, uh, we've written it to include any land that the Squawson Island Tribe, any trust land they have uh to give us the more clear authority on their property. So uh, this is an action item. Um, I'm asking to approve and authorize the chief police to sign the updated letter of understanding with the Squawson Island Tribe to provide law enforcement services to any Squawson Island Tribal Trust Land located within the city of Tom Water, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Council, uh, Councilmember Althouser.
Thanks, Mayor. So the tribe does provide a nominal, I'd describe it as a nominal fee or for, for services to provide that. So i- if the tribe were to acquire a significant new piece of land or parcel and would then, would that, uh, and that was then put into trust, would it automatically then be grandfathered into this agreement and therefore we would be providing services to that new piece of land without increasing the nominal? I'm not really kidding, it's twenty-five hundred dollars. It's not like it's make or break, but I guess I'm just curious, so does that make it automatic whenever there's new land put into trust?
I'll leave that to Karen.
Hold on one second. There you go.
Um, I, that's the intent of the updated agreement is so that we don't have to amend it each time there's new addition um of land. Um, but the, the fee also um will be reopened again for negotiation in two years.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, do I hear a motion to approve? Councilmember Althouser.
Thanks, I, I move we approve and authorize the chief of police to sign the updated letter of understanding with the Squawson Island Tribe to provide law enforcement services to any Squawson Island Tribal Land located within the city of Tom Water.
I'll second.
Okay, that was a fast second. Uh, I think Council, Councilmember Von Holtz, I think was maybe be a little bit faster, so m- moved by Councilmember Althouser, seconded by Councilmember Von Holtz. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? All right, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and now for the item that was added to the council considerations and uh Councilmember Dahlhoff brought that in, and I'm assuming it is the, from the email you sent earlier, which was a proposal for an emergency ordinance to preserve the Davis Meeker Oak Tree. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the email sent on June second, twenty twenty-four with three sample proposals for a council discussion.
Angela did raise her hand before we started on this, just as.
Oh, I'm sorry, Angela, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, did we need a motion to approve the cancellation of the June eighteenth regular council meeting?
That was on our council considerations.
Okay.
Consent.
I'm sorry, council consent. It was already done. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The email was regarding three sample proposals. So as this current state has been evolving, it has been, um, the municipal codes have been addressed for the reason for executive branch of government administrative decision. So the question I was bringing forward is when it comes to municipal codes, that's council, that's the legislative branch of government. So knowing that the temporary restraining order expires tomorrow at five, what does it look like for council to have a discussion about updating the municipal code for section sixteen for the exemption? And what I was hoping to have a discussion is what would it look like when data is called into question? That if a board or a commission or a council calls into question that data, that it is independently third-party assessed for to validate and reproduce. And where I'm getting at is we're council members here tonight and the majority of us have other jobs and other responsibilities, and my job is a chemist. I have always been a chemist, is been my lifelong dream. Everything I do is about science. So I'm bringing this back because comments have been made that council should not rule based on feelings. We should be ruling it based on what's presented to us. And that's what I'm going back to is what I know is science. And so I'm asking us to follow the scientific method of when data is called into question, that it's not about the person, it is about the data. And that's what I'm asking to have a conversation. What does it look like for council to amend the municipal code? To say if data is called into question, that it automatically goes to an independent third-party assessment for validation and reproducibility.
Uh, Councilmember Kathy.
So, um, Councilmember Dahlhoff, uh, are you going to ask three different things? And that's just the first one, which is to modify the code?
The question is, it's been coming, it's been presented to us that this is administrative function. So what part does council play as a legislative branch of government? Do we pass? Do we discuss the Bellingham recent example that Tanya also brought up? And do we do an ordinance like that, an emergency ordinance? Do we look at the municipal codes in the email that I sent for adding trees? Because it was told trees aren't in there for the waiver, even though objects are, a tree is an object. So if that needs to be cleared up because it is a unique situation, let's modify that municipal code to add tree, organic, non-building structure. What does it look like for the exemption of the data to remove something? If the data is called into question, so could we do that? Does it need to be an emergency ordinance?
I'm still.
So, I mean.
I'm still.
I know I just heard our city attorney state assisted discussion. What if, what would it look like for me to make a motion to amend the municipal code?
And with that is an emergency.
That's the question is, can it be effective immediately or would it have to be an emergency ordinance?
Oh, you, you've brought up several different things.
Thank you, and I apologize. It's that's what I'm hoping to have a discussion is if the temporary restraining order expires tomorrow at five o'clock and council wants to update the municipal code so that if data is called into question for any action, that it is independently third-party assessed before any action or inaction is taken.
Okay, so you, so you're saying what you desire to do is update uh Title sixteen in order to require additional assessment of some type.
Chapter sixteen point zero eight E to update the Tom Water Municipal Code for any documentation that is called into question by a board, a commission, or a council that a third-party independent assessment will be performed to validate and reproduce documentation before any decision or action or non-action is made.
So, uh, first thing would be that we would need an ordinance um to bring forward to the council for discussion. Most of the tree protection ordinance require is considered development regulation, so that requires uh additional process to go through the planning commission um and have, requires a public hearing as well as notice to the state, et cetera.
So what is the difference of declaring an emergency ordinance like Bellingham did, knowing that they will follow up on the due diligence of those portions?
So, um, an ordinance can be adopted, adopted as an emergency. It would um first require that we have an ordinance to bring before the council to vote on. Um, and then it would require a unanimous vote to take effect immediately.
Unanimous or supermajority?
Unanimous.
So it's supermajority of the mayor vetoes, needs a super, but you need unanimous to do an emergency ordinance?
Because we're a initiative in referendum city, it requires unanimous vote.
Okay. So I drafted an ordinance, which is rough. Really rough. But I drafted it and put it in the email.
All right, so what you're referring to doesn't meet the minimum qualifications of an ordinance.
Okay.
S- so um Attorney Kirk Patrick, what um, what calls for a unanimous council vote? Why does it call for a unanimous vote?
Um, it has to do, so it, it, it's required by state statute because, because we have the power of initiative and ref- referendum. Um, there's an additional requirement that it be a unanimous vote, not a supermajority.
To change our own ordinance?
To make it an emergency.
To make it an emergency.
Guess the question is, how do we, if it's not an emergency, then how can we have a discussion about not removing the tree until this ordinance can be drafted to meet the standards? Because we don't write ordinances, so I did the best that I could, and apparently that is not sufficient. So what does it look like to make it sufficient to have a discussion without the tree coming down? Not even talking about the federal regulations or our tribal neighbors and their concerns. I'm just talking about data called into question and using the scientific method that has been around since the sixteen hundreds, the same time that tree started growing.
But that, that's up to the council and the mayor if you wish to have a discussion about that. Um, and then direct staff accordingly, um, if that's the direction that you want to go.
If we were to vote tonight to um extend this um beyond tomorrow, and these are some of the reasons that uh Councilmember Dahlhoff is putting forth. I would also like to add in um the letter that was received by, uh, I believe, the Nisqually Tribe from uh the chairman of the Nisqually Tribe that we put this off. Uh, uh, they, he didn't name it length of time, but that would need to be talked about, but for the, for the tribe to be able to check with their two different entities about historical and preservation issues. So um, I would like to honor that. I mean, it, we've even heard here tonight, you know, what does it mean to honor our ancestors, a tree, the native people, um, all of us who love it, um, all of that kind of thing. And so if, if we are going to vote to extend the deadline of five o'clock tomorrow, I would like it to also include that the tribes honor what the tribes ask for in their, in their letter, along with what Councilmember Dahlhoff is uh speaking about.
Uh, I have two people. Councilmember Agabi, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Karen, I'm not sure if you saw the email from plaintiff attorney today. Sometimes this afternoon, in that email, the plaintiff attorney have made some uh suggested settlement. She said, and I'm, I'm, I don't have the email, I'm just trying to go by recollection, that uh if an assessment was to, were to be done by the plaintiff uh arbiters that that arbiters will guarantee, or the insurance will guarantee that if the tree were to come down and injure somebody, that their insurance would be liable for that. So along those lines, have you seen any email to that effect?
I believe I saw the same email that you did.
So, so, so naturally, if, if if this attorney is making a assertions or statements that uh if an arbit, if I, if a neutral arbiters were to conduct an assessment, if something were to happen in the interim that they, they were going to be responsible, how would you go about making that a legal document?
I'd have to look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jefferson? You're, you're on mute, Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, um, I took copious notes as um our community members were talking to us today. And I heard apathy. I heard almost like there's a lack of concern. I heard a lack of trust towards us and what we are saying as council members, as mayor, as city administrator. I would like to propose a compromise. Um, I am familiar as a military leader with risk assessments and mitigating risks. We heard our insurance company has told us you won't be covered if someone should be injured. If that tree should fall and that limb should hurt someone or kill someone, heaven forbid, it's a family member. So we understand that, you know, removing the tree, that's a risk mitigation. Perhaps we can look at trimming the tree, bracing the tree as some members of our community said that can be done. Our Native Americans, um, community members are very upset with us right now. We, we got a letter from, you know, uh, the, the Red Wind, uh, the, I'm looking at it right now from Chairman uh Ken Choak. The tribe requests that the city delay taking any action to remove the oak tree until the tribe has had an opportunity to complete consultation with the state historic preservation officer and the tribal historic preservation officer. I think we owe it to them. I think we owe it to them to at least get that independent third party analysis. I believe that our community understands that we feel in city leadership that that tree could fall. But let's give thirty days a sixty day extension so we can listen to what we heard today and digest it.
Councilmember Swartho?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um I would also like to uh follow up on Councilmember Dahlhoff's um request. We had questions about the numbers and, you know, and, and while they give me, tease me about being the numbers person, but numbers need to mean something. And so I, I'm concerned that um I would like to see the, that we could have in, under these circumstances um or any circumstance moving forward, that if we have um, you know, difference in data that we uh take that, that step forward to make sure that the data that we have received um helps us uh with our decision moving forward. And I um I'm very, was moved by the testimony we heard tonight um as well. And um and in respect and honor to our tribes, we, we do have a request from the new uh leadership, the new uh I'm sorry, this gentleman from the Nisqually Tribe is now that um the head of the tribe uh to, to pause. And so I would, I don't know what we need to do to do this, but um as a, as a council and that we take a pause and allow some of these questions to be answered um and to seek that third opinion. And so that we all have a, we're, and then the community can see too that uh that it's in good faith that we have made every effort um rather than, you know, going for that first one, that we've made every effort to um to exhaust the possibilities before um action needs to be taken or if it is, does need to be taken. So um I would like to see that happen this evening.
Uh Councilmember Von Holtz?
Thank you, Mayor. Um in regards to what Councilmember Jefferson said, we did hear from our insurance company, and they did say that we wouldn't be covered if someone was killed or injured by the tree. They also said that if the numbers were different, if the scientific data was different, they would change their opinion. I believe I remember hearing that. So I would also um like to consider what Councilmember Dahlhoff has suggested, and um I've already suggested to Administrator Parks that we need to do a third independent review of the findings of this report to honor our community members and all the concerns that have been brought up.
Uh Councilmember Kathy and then Councilmember Alt Hauser? Oh, Councilmember Alt Hauser, go ahead.
I have a, this is a legal process question um for the city attorney. As a council, you know, we can pass motions and resolutions, we can pass ordinances, those are two, three, three distinct things. So as a council, we could pass something that said uh that the council, that uh we are directing staff to seek a third party analysis and that we are requesting that the tree not come down for a period, X period of time. But there is no actual, like, we could say the tree shall not come down, but there's no act, like, by just doing a motion as opposed to an ordinance, there's no actual legal mechanism to compel the administration, the executive branch to not take action, is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
So the mechanism that a council would have to exert would be to pass an ordinance, which because it's regarding a development code, has to go through the typical process of a public hearing and all our typical procedures, going through whatever committees it's assigned to, unless it's an emergency ordinance that is enacted.
Correct. It would still have to go through those processes, um but it could be enacted as an emergency. And then there's certain additional requirements to go through those processes during the interim controls.
Are there requirements for what constitutes an emergency? Like we heard in the OPMA presentation, the definition of an emergency for a special meeting was a rather high bar. I think the examples that he gave were a fire or contamination of a water source. Is there a similar, what's the threshold for?
Public, public health and safety. Um, I, I don't have it in front of me to, to speak to it directly, but it's not as high a threshold as what he was speaking to for the remote emergency meeting.
Okay.
So, thank you. So about the emergency ordinance, uh, an emergency ordinance is why we're here where we are and why people mistrust us and so forth, because uh the mayor and the city administrator have told us that this is an emergency. So that's part of what started this on a short uh, you know, going to court and getting on a short leash and so forth here. So we, if we um as all the council members who weighed in on something here, we unanimously decide to do something with emergency in it. Does the, and is, are we capable of doing that? And what would, what is that called? That's what Michael was asking about, and maybe I heard it and didn't understand that. And also, if we do it, we do not have to have uh thirty days or sixty days or ninety days. We could have until certain things are, are cleared up and we report back and we talk about it and whatever. Because I want to mention one thing that's off of the, you don't have to put this in the, in the emergency ordinance, but with uh the police officer who received the person of the year here as a, as a policeman. I was caught by the fact that our police chief said and implied more than once in this that this man, Officer Clark, knows how to do it together. Do it together, and I want this community that's still here to know, there are those of us here who are trying to do this together. We are trying to, I am trying to do it together. And we are looking here for a way to extend this so we can do it together. So, so we can make, so we can make something happen that, that not only keeps us in community, but maybe creates a stronger uh community. So that's why I appreciate what Councilmember Dahlhoff has done and the questions that um you know, our colleagues on the wall over there um are with us on here, I guess. And uh I would like to see that happen tonight if we can do that with the high bar of all council members voting the same way.
Any of those?
Sorry for the sermon in between.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Dahlhoff.
I appreciate this time to have this discussion. Different brands of governments, and I, I see the irony of the OPMA meetings acting on this, but I also appreciate that. The challenge I'm having is the timeline, right, and this happening, emergency, non-emergency, right? Decisions, uh factors, and then, okay, so what is our lane as council? It's a legislative branch of government. If the, if a, a portion of the municipal code is being used for, to make that action, then let's update that. We've been hearing it's unique, it's different, we haven't had so, so let's fix that for the current state and moving forward. So what does that look like? Well, we can't do an emergency ordinance, I drafted one, not good enough, so you need the time to go through the process. So how do I ask the executive branch of government to let us do that process? To let us go do that, right? So I don't know where, I'm not looking at you, city attorney, looking at Mayor. What does that look like moving forward is like, this is a process trying to fix the current state and move forward together. What does it look like to give us the opportunity? When Kevin McFarland did his assessment, he charged the city six hours. So could this third party independent assessment happen tomorrow? Can it happen tomorrow? Could you give us that time? Like, I don't know how, if I can't make a motion, my ordinance is not good enough, what can I do to ask?
I, I understand what you're asking for. So um I would, if, if I was to entertain this, I would not want any of the arborists or anything that's been involved in this at any way, shape or form, but somebody totally outside the scope of this who is totally under, totally, totally independent from all of the rhetoric and all the other things and all of the, the preconceived notions that we've already had. How long would it take to do that? Council, uh city administrator Parks, how long do you think that would take?
I'm, I'm gonna have to ask Karen whether or not we'd have to do a request for proposals of some sort, but um I would assume. Uh so it took Kevin McFarland a few months. I don't know if that was because he was being deliberate or he had other things going on, so I can't, I can't, I don't know how long it would take necessarily. I would hope we could get something done.
He charged six hours for the work.
So I
That, that, that's, but it's the amount of time it takes to actually do the assessment.
I
Six hours.
We can put a contract together quickly, so says the attorney.
Okay.
So um I'm not an arborist.
Right.
Um so I don't know exactly how long it would take. I would say that if this is a path that the, that the mayor would like to go in partnership with the council, we can work on trying to figure out ways, and we are currently working on ways to um try and provide the temporary public safety measures that really need to go into place sooner than later. And during that time, we, we've been anticipating needing to do that anyway because of the prospect of the legal proceedings continuing for a period of time. So we've already started down the path of researching what our alternatives are in trying to provide some public safety measures as an interim measure. We certainly could do that and, and move forward with those items as quickly as possible. Um if you would choose to select and have a, a third party review done, we certainly could do that. And, and um in the meantime, we will remain liable for any risk that happens. I, I, I am going to indicate that risk liability is something that a city faces every day, whether it's stubbing your toe on a sidewalk. Um we pay a lot of money for people to get their tires replaced as they're driving over the seal coating. Um it is a factor and it is a real factor that we have to consider. That being said, as I mentioned, we are looking at ways in which we could try to provide public safety in that interim period of time. And if the choice is to move forward with that, we will do our best due diligence to make sure that we are able to accomplish that.
Just begging you, Mayor, to just follow the scientific method.
I have a question first.
So one, one second moment, I want, I want to say something here. So with this change, I also want council to understand that you are also absorbing the risk of this thing that we would be doing. This would require, this will require, because we were needing to plan for this if this was delayed in the taking down of the tree. We need to reroute traffic. We need to have traffic away from that tree. What does that look like? How much does it cost to build a road? Everybody says, oh, just build a road. That is goes by pocket go for habitat that we do not have mitigated, and we're going to have to build a structure that can hold twenty-two thousand vehicles per day. So this is not just a little thing. So we're going to have to come up with steps that the council's going to have to be very involved in on how we mitigate this issue. And this is something that we need to do right away. We need to, uh you, you know, there's a whole lot here, everybody throws out, we'll just move the road. Well, that takes engineering, design, building. I've heard um, you know, uh taking the top part of the tree off. Well, that may work, it may not, we will find out if we have a third party arborist. But there's a way we have to keep the public away from not having tens of millions of dollars in lawsuits. I've heard here how little of a risk it is. In February and March, there were three people killed in the city, state of Washington. February and March, two in Issaquah, one somewhere else from trees falling on them. Two of them were motorists, so I've heard a lot of data. I take those things into consideration when I have to think about public safety. I will be willing to work with coming up with a reasonable time to find out where we can find another arborist to get a third party input and then what that amounts to.
Thank you. That's all I ask. That's all I'm asking is for independent third party assessment. I understand the risk, I'm not questioning the risk. I'm just asking to follow the science and the scientific method. That's all I'm asking.
So we can put out a proposal?
We'll, we'll move forward as quickly as possible.
Alright.
I have a question.
Mayor, Mayor?
Yeah, one, one second, Councilmember Gobby. Uh I'll go to council, I go, I'll do Councilmember Kathy, I'll do Councilmember Gobby, and I saw it, I saw Councilmember Jefferson's um hand up.
So this is the vague part that upsets me and upsets the community or the people I hear from is we have to continue with the items that we were, we were headed toward or that we were going to do. What are these items that you would want to do with the tree or at the tree or whatever? Uh in the meantime, it's kind of like the statement where um it, it's on the website and it was, we got it in an email where um Administrator Parks, you wrote the, the, the council, I mean, the city is not going to do anything right now. Well, so people went, right now means what? Means how long? Means, you know, what are you gonna do when you do it? That kind of thing. So to say that we're going to get an arborist, but we're gonna continue to do the items we were going to do before we talked about this.
Oh, the mitigation part.
What are they?
Mitigation, road, rerouting traffic, moving people away from the tree.
So I, um Councilmember Kathy, the statement in
That's crazy. Why are we spending our time on that?
May I please answer?
Yes, you can, thank you.
So the statement on the, on the website wasn't intended to be respectful of the legal proceedings that were, that were, that were in process. We're not going to do anything while we're asked not to do anything by the law. The measures that we're looking at right now, one of the things that we did do is we put the fence up around the base of the tree. We are going to be talking to the Port of Olympia about them needing to do um added control of their parking during any and all of their events. We have been looking at what it would take to um uh detour, uh close that section of Old Highway ninety-nine and, and detour traffic. There are some concerns about doing that as well in terms of some of the roads that you're going, some of the intersections and the roadway geometry that you're going to be sending these at this twenty thousand ADT around are of concern, so we need to look at how that actually can be done appropriately. That's what the engineering department is working on. We're also talking up about potentially shifting and providing at least a temporary lane of travel um to the east of the existing roadway outside the drip line of the tree as a way to do that on a temporary basis. But those are the things that I meant specifically. I don't have the details for those, I don't have the costs of those. If we close the road for a period of time for more than twelve hours at a time, it requires council action. I believe that's the reference the mayor was making, that if we move forward, there are things that the council is going to have to do in order for us to be able to proceed. Um and, and that's what we're currently looking at and investigating.
And so this is temporary, what you're talking about, temporary for now? Um and something you were gonna do no matter what or?
We
Or, or, but I mean, why, why would you be doing all of that before an assessment? I mean, why are, why are we going to all of this trouble and spending this money? I mean, I understand not having people park under it or something like that, but this whole road thing and whatever, why would we be spending money on that until we see what this assessment is?
We were planning to do that based on the possibility that there would be an extended court process that would prevent us from removing the tree, which was the intended purpose is to provide public safety. That was why we were looking into it already. What I understand from the mayor is that she's willing to put a pause on my, what I understood from her to me as her employee is she's un, she's willing to look at a reasonable timeframe to have a third party um analysis, uh risk assessment completed. Um I understand that to be a full risk assessment, not necessarily a
Full risk assessment.
Peer review, okay? And that, and that in the interim, that we needed to try and continue with our work to identify these measures that would provide um safety to the traveling public in that That would provide, um, safety to the traveling public in that period of time. Until there is a change in the ordinances, until there's a change in, at this point in time, the mayor's decision. It, that's why I'm using the word interim or temporary, because that's what I understand it to be at this point in time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gobby.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was, uh, wondering, we don't have to have a death certain with which, uh. This new arborist is going to do the assessment. But we do need a timeframe with which we will have as our official time. Because we are a government entity. We need, we do need to say on today, June four. That we said that, uh, we would keep the tree up for three, four months. And this is what is going to happen. So I am asking, do we need, Karen, do we need to have a timeframe? At least to have the arborist be on board. Thank you.
It's my understanding from the mayor that she would like us to have that third party review done. And I would assume that, and she can clarify, that the reasonable time that she mentioned in her first statement was. The, the time that it would take for a third party arborist to get that risk assessment completed. And, and again, I apologize, I don't know how long is a reasonable time in that context. We could certainly, um, evaluate that and, and get back to you.
And, and I'm sure that will be defined by when we get, uh, have an arborist. They will be able to perform that timeline of when that would be done. So, and then it would be a review. So I don't know if we can put a timeline on it at this moment. That would be just pure guessing.
Thank you.
I, I, I also agree with, um, that reasonable time. Because if this tree is at the condition that our arborist has told us, which will take an emergency. I understand the grave risk to the community and the mayor's concerned. I would also, um, ask that you involve our, our native partners and our native tribes. Because as you can see today with the conversation, um. Can you approach them and get them involved with the decision making?
So, so let me, yes, Councilmember Jefferson, let me clarify that. I have reached out to the Nisqually, the Squaxen, the Chehalis, and the Cowlets. And I received information back, except from the Cowlets, the Cowlets I did not hear back from. I have had, uh, support from other tribes and I have talked to other chairs. There has been change in leadership in two of those tribes, being the Nisqually and the Cowlets. So we are basically starting from ground zero, developing those relationships. Uh, Councilmember Dahlhoff was actually with me when we had our joint meeting with the Squaxen Tribe, uh, earlier. And so we do have those great conversations. I have had in the last two weeks numerous conversations with Dustin, who is the, uh, Chair of the Chehalis Tribe. They're very familiar with what we are talking about. And unfortunately, we've had change in leadership. And so all my conversations with the Nisqually, I have to start over. I understand that. I take great value in my relationship with all of the tribes. I was able to get a joint council with the Squaxen Tribe. That takes work, that takes relationship building. So I really want to set the record straight that I am not just ignoring the tribes. I work very hard to develop a relationship with the tribes. And so I just want to make that record clear. That I am in good standing with several tribal chairs and have those conversations. And I fully understand I have two new chairs that I need to develop a relationship with. Because they are brand new this week.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, moving forward, so I would say at this point, for the discussion of this. We will be moving forward with an independent third party arborist, and I want to make it perfectly clear. It is no one who has had input into this process in any way, shape or form at this time. Because I want it fully independent with no bias. And then we will go ahead and do that. That will give us an opportunity to understand a timeline when this will happen. And I also put it on council that we need to keep this public safe. We need to do what we need to do to mitigate the danger of individuals being exposed to this tree. And could be injured or killed. And I'm putting that on the council to work with me to make sure that happens. Because there's limited things I can do as an executive, which includes rerouting traffic. And I will have to have council's assistance in that process.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So that is my decision. All right. Anything else on this topic?
Thank you for listening.
So with that, we're gonna go to committee reports, and since we're almost eleven o'clock. I would request that maybe we skip committee reports for this evening. And I, I don't, I just don't think there's too many things that we need to do. Other than I just wanna make mention that we have dog days at Pioneer Park this Saturday. And Juneteenth celebration on the fifteenth, which is the following Saturday. Council, uh, yes, Administrator Parks.
Yes, it's late. I just wanted to make sure that the council members had read the Friday update from this last week about two things. One, our schedule of meetings over the next course, the next several weeks. We've got one canceled. We're planning to continue to hold the one in July. We have suggested in order for timeliness purposes, that we're gonna have one consent item, one or two consent items. At our work session on the twenty-fifth of June, which is unusual. And then the only other thing I wanted to draw your attention to on that Friday update. Is that we do have some joint work sessions planned with the city, with, excuse me, with the Planning Commission. Um, there is one on June twenty-fifth and one on July ninth. Uh, the important consideration of those work sessions is that we hope to have those more hybrid. Typically, our council work sessions are fully remote. When we're meeting with the Planning Commission for the first hour of your work session, we'd like to do it here. We've been doing our management team meetings in the room here with, with, um, uh, remote access, and it's not ideal, but it will work. And then, once you finalize your work, um, for the evening with the Planning Commission. They'll move their meeting to the Sunset Room and you can continue with your items. And so just drawing your attention to that, so on June twenty-fifth at six PM, that is the first one, and then on July ninth. And those are the only two before the August recess. We'll make sure that we get you, uh, um, good information about those dates. Um, and logistics as we get, um, after the, after the August reset.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.